Ma'am.
If I could get everyone to stand for the invocation and the pledges, thank you. Commissioner Matas is going to do the invocation today for us.
Thank you Judge. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for the blessings you have given us in our community. We thank you for sparing us the cost, the burden, the destruction of Hurricane. We pray for our fellow Texans to the north of us and know that we have been there and that we will do everything within our powers and abilities to help serve and support them in the days and weeks to come. Dear God, we pray for today, Lord, that you guide us to do the county's business and that you guide us to find the hearts that you have given us, Lord, for leadership and also to be servants as well, Lord. Dear God, we pray that you guide us always and protect our families in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Please be seated. It is Tuesday, July 9th, and it is 9:06 a.m. We are at 901 Leopard Street in the Oasis County courtroom. And we have four commissioners, well, the county judge and three commissioners present. Commissioner Gonzalez will be joining us later. I call this meeting to order. Thank you. Are there any disclosures or conflicts of interest anyone cares to announce? If not, then moving on, we can bring that up at that time if there's something. Public comments? Did anyone sign up for public comment? No, there's no one here. So, we are going to go into a workshop right now. The item F1, the Commissioners Court will conduct a workshop to discuss and receive a presentation related to authorizing and approving the Oasis County's Employee Self-Funded Group Health Plan, employee and employer contributions for the plan year of 2024-25. And Mr. Saleh, I see you are there, and Mr. Bass, we have you online as well. So, I will let you begin and start, Mr. Saleh.
Ma'am.
Oh, yes.
9:07, I mean, whatever time.
Oh, I said 9:06 first, yeah.
No, 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 we started the workshop.
Yes, 9:00, oh, the workshop, yes, thank you. 9:07.
Well, good morning.
And we have to end and do that again, yes, thank you for the reminder.
You pushed it too far back.
Okay. Good morning Judge and Commissioners. First, I want to acknowledge and thank the County Auditor's Office, the Insurance Committee, and McGriff Insurance Services for the hard work that they put forth in compiling this information and being able to provide expert analysis to the court, the court to decide when our insurance premium is based on current data and forecasting. With that being said, I have provided each of you a packet of the presentation that will be displayed today. Connie, can we get that on the screen?
Oh, wait. First, I need to know which one.
Well, first, I want to start off with the external agency benefit census. You should have that, that one right there. One of the requests for the court was to be able to provide some data in terms of how many external agencies we have, how many employees are currently enrolled in our insurance health plan in Oasis County, and some additional questions which we will address later. And I also want to thank the County Attorney's Office for the diligent work that they did on this and providing some legal counsel for us to consider. So, looking at the external agency count, the benefit census that I have before you, we have a grand total of approximately five external agencies. That total about 213 employees with retirees. Currently, we have approximately 61 employees enrolled, including retirees, but 48, or actually 50, they should say 50, because we've added the dispute resolution team, which includes an additional two employees. So, the actual number of enrolled employees should read 50. When I look at the, one of the things for you to consider, and Connie, you probably don't have this, but Judge and Commissioners, in your packets, the very last page, it says claims paid by county per plan year and premiums paid by entity per plan year. One of your requests was to provide this data so that you can discuss and consider any action you might take regarding this, inclusion of those parties in our plan. So, the total of claims for the past four years, beginning with October 2019 through April 2024 amounted 2,000, I mean, I'm sorry, $2,502,042. The total of premiums provided by all of those external agencies equates to $3,351,387. As you can see, that there is a surplus of actual revenue that we have received in regards to our claims and in regards to the premiums collected. And that totals $849,346.38. So, currently, there is no adverse impact by having those external agencies on our health plan. However, it's up to the court to decide if you want to continue that. Certainly, McGriff Insurance has advised me, and they can speak more on this, is that we don't have to provide insurance coverage to those external agencies. And John, are you on? Can you provide a little bit more counsel on that?
Hey, good morning, Tim. Just a quick order of business. My associate, Alicia Dominich, is still in the waiting room on Zoom. So, maybe could someone admit her to the meeting? But really, to your point, Tim, you know, the county, in our opinion, it's really a county discretion on whether to extend coverage to those entities that have some legal structure within the county. Again, the court, in our mind, is under no obligation to extend coverage to those entities. And certainly, the court is able to terminate those with proper notice if the court so chooses. You know, it, I would just simply advise the court or recommend that there is some legal structure between those entities and the court. There's some affiliation. And I would defer to the county attorney for that type of clarification. But really, it's the court's decision on whether they want to continue to extend coverage to those third parties that have some affiliation with the county. I would also recommend that if there is an entity that has absolutely no affiliation with the county, there is no legal requirement, there's no structure, there is, it's a separate and complete entity, I see no reason, the court, to continue coverage for those, for those particular entities and those, and those individuals covered. So, that, this has been obviously prior to McGriff coming on, but that's the advisement we would give any client, certainly in the public entity space, of extending coverage to third-party entities, making sure that there is proper legal structure and court approval for, for coverage. And, and the plan documents reflect that.
There's also, and I'll ask too, I would like Ginny to answer this one. There is one entity that we have no legal authority to allow them to use it. I think we are not allowed legally to have them on a plan. That's the only one that is, yes.
We found a 2010 advisory to the court. We agree with its findings regarding the credit union. And we don't find authority to have them.
Was that when they were included in here as well in 2010, when it was asked? Or when did they get included?
Hmm, that one I don't have off the top of my head. The credit union, perhaps?
I'm sorry, Judge, I didn't hear the full question.
There's an opinion that says we cannot allow that, that outside entity on a county policy. They, our legal has reviewed it and agrees with that opinion on the credit union only. I was wondering at what point, at what year, did we allow the credit union to join with a 2010 opinion against it? And the current administration agreeing that we don't have the legal authority to even offer it to them to be on.
Apparently, a long time.
Oh, really?
Well, I mean, if we got the advisory in 2010, that was before any of us that are up here were here. So, they must have been in here before that. I don't remember us adding anybody since I've been here, but I could be mistaken. I remember we had a debate over one of them and we couldn't.
Drainage District, I believe. The Drainage District was probably the most recent entity, and that was within the last four years.
No, four.
That one appears on the agendas in 2019 and then periodically before that.
Before that, too.
And before that, yeah.
I think we, that was, there was, there was a debate over that one in 19, but we didn't.
So, they were already on, and we just finalized it, or what was that, on the Drainage?
There are agreements, and then there are hearings of the Commissioners Court in 2019, where I believe the court voted to include them again. But we don't have a written document to accompany that action by the court.
So, I would like to state that my team did really do a lot of deep diving to find the Memorandums of Understanding, which was presented to the County Attorney's Office. And all that we were able to find is what we have provided to the court this morning. So, I wasn't able to find any additional data regarding your request this morning, Judge.
Well, nevertheless, moving forward, even if, if this all continues, we need current Memorandums of Understanding, or current documents to move for, I mean, just moving forward to clean this up where we have something that we can find, yes.
Okay.
So, what is, what is, I'm sorry, what is CSCD?
That is Community Supervision.
Resultation.
Resultation, yes.
Okay, so, there's 142, so in other words, there's 213 potential employees that could be enrolled, and there's only 50 currently enrolled out of all these? Or 215, I guess, because dispute's not on here, so you gotta add that to the grand total. So, there's 215 potential employees that could be on our plan?
That's incorrect. CSCD's not eligible.
Who?
There was supposed to be a column added that said eligible, ineligible. And I believe that.
That's an additional one that is ineligible.
It says not eligible.
I, I'm sorry, I don't have the confidential packet, but it does say not eligible. So, CSCD's not eligible to be on our insurance.
I just got this piece today, so where's this one? Where's it say not eligible?
Yes, the ones that were included on the agenda included that information. I printed, printed this this morning to be able to show the court.
The page drive before the last, second to last.
But where's it say eligible or not eligible?
It doesn't on that one.
That's the only one I have.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so, okay, so CCSD is what you're saying is not eligible?
That's correct.
Okay, so then the 213 number is completely wrong, so then.
The 213 number is the total of employees. What Lisa's stating is a number of those employees that are eligible to participate in the plan.
But, but is CCS, is CSCD on our plan now?
They are not, no.
So, I guess they, why would they be on the list?
Why are they on the list?
And I had that question previously. I included all of the employees' total count in the external agencies so that she can see that information.
Yeah, I don't need that. That's just confusing. So, let me go back. I gotta do some math here. So, what you're telling me is this, so we have to add dispute resolution? So, that, that, what I've got, I don't know what this eligible, ineligible thing is. Then I've got 215 would be the total, but then I'm gonna subtract out.
You didn't get that?
I'm gonna subtract out 142 from CSCD, because they're not on the plan, right? So, that means there's 73 potential, unless there's some others on this list that aren't eligible? But there's only 50 enrolled, so 50 of 73 are enrolled?
Plus dependents.
Pardon?
Plus dependents if they do family plans.
Well, that's, that was my next question, so I'm trying to get this figured out. So, if I take out the 142 CSCD, or C, sorry, CSCD, yeah, that leaves 73 eligible employees, including dispute resolution, 50 of which are enrolled, plus families if they decide, or 50, is this 50 people? Or is this 50 employees plus plus?
Well, the total covered, including dependents, amounts to 130.
130 people, so we're, we're covering 130 people that are not Oasis County employees other than maybe the partial Oasis County salary from the Texas A&amp;M Agriculture, which is four. Is that being a correct assessment?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, and, and is it correct? We talked about last time. Lisa confirmed last time for me, but I want to reconfirm again. Of these 130 people, the entity pays, the owner, the owner, not the owner, the, what do we call, the insured, the insured and the insured are paid by the, the premiums are paid by the two, the entities and/or the, the employees. But we, as a county, are responsible for any claims, meaning, is that correct, Lisa?
That is correct.
So, we have, so we sit here today as a county, and we've been lucky, okay? Hadn't had an adverse effect yet.
Hold on, I need to put an asterisk next to that adverse. So, the 800 surplus does not include any prescription payments. We weren't able to gather that information. So, without having that information, I cannot confirm nor deny whether, if there is actually a surplus. This is just their medical excluding prescription claims.
That's fair, and let's, let's say there's another chunk, large chunk.
And, and that is the, that is an extremely large chunk.
Right, so, maybe it's not 800,000. So, maybe, maybe sitting today, we're even. Maybe it's not 800,000, maybe it's 400. At the end of the day, it's not been horrible. I mean, as far as we can tell. But we still sit here today with exposure to, for 130 people who are not Oasis County employees, other than the partial pay for the four at the A&amp;M system. I, I don't think that's wise or appropriate in any way, shape, or form. I don't, I don't support going forward with that at all anymore. We've, we've, we've touched on this before. But honestly, there weren't the votes in the past to do anything about it. I'm just, that's as clear as I can say it. And that's not just the last county judge, that was the county judge before her as well. So, being completely fair, you know, rest in peace, love the man very dearly, but he wanted to keep him on, too. So, at the end of the day, some, some fights you fight, and some fights you just. But at this point, in the position we are in as a county, struggling every year to make up surpluses in insurance, to, to have 130 additional people on the courts, on the county's potential liability list is very scary. If one of those, and that's 130, there's chances are, if one of those, God willing, God forbid, has a horrible claim and this county has to pay for that, that's not fair to the other county employees. That's not fair to our, our constituents. And it's, it's not right to do it. I'm not unsympathetic to those entities that are on here. They need to be put on notice in, if this court so chooses. If they don't, then they get to stay. That they need to go look for other insurance, and they need to figure out how to do it because it's just not, that's just not what we're supposed to do. And it's, in my opinion, it's time to take a stand and make a difference and be fair to the constituents that we represent and be fair to our employees. Because if, if this, it's just not right. So, I don't, I don't know where to go from here as far as what we can do this time. I'm, I'm not gonna vote for anything that includes these 130. I might be in the minority, and that's okay, but I'm gonna go on record being in the minority on that, if that's what it is. And, and I think that's something we need to discuss as a court. And again, I want to say I appreciate the heck out of the work that y'all did, and especially the Insurance Committee and Commissioner Matas, who, who really has been spearheading this for years, trying to get us to do this quicker and on a more timely basis, so that we don't come up on these deadlines like we do every year, and we go, God, we gotta do this. So, thank you, Mr. Matas, and I think Judge, you're involved in that, and Tim, and everybody, really. Because we wouldn't even be able to have this discussion had we not started this earlier and, and done this with a, with a different situation. And thanks to McGriff, too, for the role they played. I haven't had a chance to really visit with them, so I don't know. But I think, I think it's definitely time we, we take some action on that. And, and you know, my question, I guess, to stop articulating, is can we do that now? So, as I heard McGriff, I heard him say, and you say, we're under no obligation to, to, to keep them on? My question is, can we do it now, if we, if the court so chooses, as you said?
Well, I, I think based on the Memorandums of Understanding that we have before us, at least one of them states with due notice, we can eliminate those external agencies. I only saw that in the one Memorandum of Understanding. I believe that was the Drainage District. Ginny, you can correct me if I'm mistaken. However, we would be providing sufficient notice. Today is July 9th, and they would, assumingly, if you approved to remove them, we're going to effect October 1st. So, they have, in essence, about two and a half months to provide, to find alternative care. And so, I would agree with you, Commissioner, even though we've been fortunate for the past four years with having a surplus, or possibly not, once our prescription costs. You know, we've kind of dodged a bullet, just like we kind of did with Hurricane Barrel. And so, it doesn't mean that going forward, that won't be the case. So, that will continue to be the case, where we will have a surplus. Even one claim could be exorbitant, could be in the millions. And so, I think the court should take that in consideration as well.
I also think not having those prescription costs on here. I know it looks like in the last five years, the only year we were under is last year, that we had a deficit in the amount collected and the claims paid out without prescriptions being included. But there are three other years that if you add prescriptions to that, then this gets, you know, then you have, I mean, two other years, sorry, I was including last year, but there are two other years that it's a little bit too close, when you only have 70,000 there and you have 80,000 there. I'm quite certain those prescription costs add, bring that up, because I see those amounts that come through my office all the time. It's a little too close for comfort. I understand the legality about not having one of the entities in there. And I'm not sure what the rest of the court thinks about this. I think next year, as Commissioner Matas and I were in those meetings, and we had hoped to go out for bids next to what we planned to, not hope to, that is our intention. I'm not sure that with the MOUs and giving notice, and especially some of our, our major partners, you know, the hospital district, those people, they, they do a lot, and they do a lot for healthcare. I don't know that I'd be willing to knock them off at the last minute for this without some negotiations going on between us. And that, not just a notice today in court, like you're done, you're on your own.
Well, in the hospital district, of all people, Judge, they got more money than, they got more money than we do. I mean, if they, I mean, really, and I'm not, I mean, I'm, that's the one that I'm the most sympathetic to, because they do so much for the county. I mean, they really participate in a huge way with the county. I, with all due respect to the rest of these, they're their own entities, and they're their own things. And they ought to be able to stand on their own or go get what they need to get. But the hospital district literally has millions in reserves. They could be self-insured better than we could. I mean, they have more in reserves than we do and have, you know, a, a percentage, a millennial percentage point of the employees we do, so.
But I'm wondering if our MOUs can't reflect that claims over a certain amount and revert back to the entity for them to pick up that tab? I mean, it's, I'm, I'm thinking.
But Judge, I mean, are you saying long-term or short-term? Because you're, you're.
Short-term.
Yeah, because I'm going on your, this is your premise of we need to do only for, I mean, you're the one who's got me on this track, because you have made the statement repeatedly, and I'm agreeing with you, because we need to do what we have to do for those we represent. And we have to stop trying to be the savior for people that, that we don't have any legal jurisdiction of.
Totally agree.
And that's where this whole thing has gone, so I, I'm afraid of.
In the short term with moving forward, I was wondering if there was any way that we can do that, because we hope to go out for a different plan next year. All of us are gonna be changing without throwing this on an entity at the last minute. But I, I wanted these numbers because I was certain that there was a lot of money that was being paid out. Unfortunately, we don't have the exact numbers in front of us on what the county is picking up the tab for, and that, that bothers me a lot. So, if we were to work out something to keep them on for next year, it would have to be with a current MOU with something that reflects that after they go over their premium amounts, they contribute, then they would have that entity for the next year while we're waiting for this. Or, you know, they can opt out and not do. To me, I think that's how you move forward, is revert the cost back to the entity. It's like, we should not be paying.
Right, I mean.
Yeah, they might as well get their own, they can, absolutely.
At that point.
But it's.
You can, we could try that, Judge, and they're gonna probably say they can't do it. There's some of them, the hospital district probably could, but the others can't. They're not gonna be able to cover it. They're gonna have to go get their own plan or.
Then that's an option. We give them at least.
And I don't even know if that's legal, or if that's what we can do.
Yeah, that's something that we would have to find out with an MOU, if you can add that wording in. John, I don't know if you know more about it, what you're.
No, I, I, I agree with, that we have to give plenty of notice to these groups. We need to bring them in, we need to make them, if, if not today, then shortly after maybe our budget process is complete, that we are looking at separating them from our plan just so that they can start exploring their own options. I, I, you know, this short amount of time out before the new fiscal year begins, I think it's just too quick of a turnaround for most entities. But I mean, I think it's a legitimate policy argument, right? Should we take on these groups? I think some have more of a claim than others, but definitely. And, and also, you know, let's get some clarification. I mean, we have a legislative session that's coming up next year, and, and these issues could be resolved by, just simply by, by the House and Senate and Governor approving and passing. And, and some of this could be worked out itself. And maybe that's something that we put on our, on our legislative agenda is to have these issues clarified. Because, I mean, we've kind of alluded to that there are some who have more of a claim or more of a reason to be a part of our system, while others don't. Well, let, let's, let's not guess. I mean, let's, let's have that established. Unless Ms. Dorsey, you and your team have the specific groups, then if you can provide us those, that list of who definitely should be included and who, and who shouldn't, and the reasons why, that would be helpful. But I think for me, as long as we give enough heads up, then, then I totally understand Commissioner Chesney's concerns on the claims. We have to look at trying to modify those. But as I have said before, you know, there are other systems in the state that have done mutual insurances. And maybe that's how we do it, right? If, if, if there, if there's something in these plans that allow for any of these department names or these entity names to help put more skin into the game, so that they are covering a proportional share of the claims, then maybe that's something that, that we would consider. Because, once again, you know, my, my limited knowledge of insurance is when you add to the number of employees in the plan, it makes it a stronger plan overall, because you can get better, better incentives for the employee pool. You can, you're dealing with a larger number. So, that helps incentivize the companies that are providing these services to give us a better rate, because you're dealing with a greater number. So, that would be my only concern is, yes, I do hear those concerns, and I share them as well. And if all things stay equal, then yes, then perhaps we do need to cut these. But one, I would say we need to give a proper notification, which I think two and a half months is, or a little over two and a half months is a very short timeframe. And also, if there's a proportional way that these entities can put in, and if they are, then, then let's make sure that we clearly spell that out. Or let's hold their feet to the fire a little bit more and make sure that they do pay a better proportion, because perhaps they're making a much larger claim pool than what they are putting into. Those are all the things I think we need to and can look into over this period of time. And as the judge said, you know, this, we hope to have a. And as the judge said, you know, this, we hope to have a plan go out on the street by the end of the year, early 2025 at the latest, so that we can have a good robust season of procurement and seeing who is out there, what they have to offer, have everything lined up. So, those would be some of my big three things that have been stated here.
I agree. But moving forward, like I said, if we need to do these before this goes into effect, these MOUs, the, I think the only way I would be willing to still allow this, if we can add some language into their MOU that over this certain amount, those entities pick up their portion of their employees or their employees dependents.
Judge, I don't think some of them can. You can try to add it all you want, but Drainage District isn't going to pay a million dollar claim. That's the problem. We have entities involved here that don't have money to do it. So, how many employees do we have in Nuasis County not including, I'm not saying these people. What do we have, about 3,000 employees?
No. If you exclude CSCD and MPO, active employees not including vacancies, we've got 1,102 currently.
Right.
And then if you include CSCD and MPO, we're at 1,250.
So, 1,250 employees, Commissioner Matas, ought to give us plenty of ability to do what you're talking about in regards to having a lot of people in there to get more benefits and so forth and so on. We're talking 50. 1,250 that are ours that we have to do, we're talking 50 employees. Taking them, taking 50 out of the mix is not going to affect how good a benefit you get or whatever. It is going to take out 130 people because it's 50 plus 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 that we have exposure of that could be millions of dollars, could be nothing, could be millions of dollars. I'm not willing to roll that dice anymore. I've sat here quietly through administrations because I, you know, I just couldn't get anywhere. And if I can't get anywhere this time, great. But I'm going, I am, I am 100% against not waiting. I am 100% in the favor of doing it right now, putting them on notice, letting them then go see what they can find and then maybe bring back something to us and then maybe have a discussion. But to say, let's, let's kind of wait and put some language in an MOU and then we'll go out for bids next year scares me because we're going to be sitting here having this conversation again next year and not giving notice again and not doing it. So, in my opinion, there needs to be action today of which, again, I got no problem if I lose. But I, this, we are rolling the dice with our employees' insurance and we're rolling the dice with our county taxpayers' insurance when we have no zero, zero, zero legal obligation to do so. That is not the premise that we ought to be working off of. So, I think we ought to give them notice now and say, go find what you can find because I believe most of them can find something that they will do. And then tell, put the onus on them, not on us. The onus on them to come back and say, okay, we looked and we can't find anything. Or we looked and this is the best we could come up with. But we can't just sit here and hope that they're going to go find something because they're not until we take action. They're not until we make a definitive move. And saying, we'll talk about it again next year or maybe, because I don't, I don't, they're not going to be able to Judge. I mean, if they go over their policy and there's a huge claim, they're not self insured. They can't. They don't have any money. The hospital district is, is and could, and they're the only ones that can, but the rest of these don't. So, I don't, no offense, but I don't think putting any language in an MOU that says, you got to pay the excess means diddly squat. They'll sign it all day long and then when it happens, they're going to go, we got no money. How are we going to pay for it? I mean, they don't, I mean, the hospital district's the only one I do that with because I know the hospital district can afford it. So, again, I don't know. I mean, we called a special meeting so that we could give people notice. We said, you know, that's the thing I asked three weeks ago whenever we had a meeting. Hey, if we come back in July, is that going to give you enough time to do open enrollment and give people notice? And you said, yes, that would be. And I said, okay, Tim, I said it and said, if you're going to wait on this and not change dates, that's on you because if this court makes a decision, you know, we had, I laid all that out there and said, hey, this is what we're talking about doing.
Commissioner, I did confer with McGriff, with Boone Chapman, and they agreed that whether or not we change the rates, it won't affect the dates of open enrollment. They have a significant.
Well, I haven't even gotten to the grandfather question and all the differences. We haven't gotten to that one yet because I'd like to know, you know, I'd like to know all that information and whether or not we should be even grandfathering again or not. I don't know.
If I might add, I did do some research with McGriff in regards to if we eliminate the 50 employees or 130 with their dependents, would that adversely affect our rates? And the answer is no. We have more than 1,100 people insured. We're a sizable entity and so our rates would not be affected if those external agencies were excluded from our plan. And John, you can add more to that, sure.
Correct. I mean, 130 employees plus dependents.
No, it's 50 plus dependents. 50 plus dependents.
Yeah. 50 employees plus dependents, a total of 130 belly buttons, Commissioner, is less than 5% of your total population. You've got just shy of 1,000 employees on the plan plus dependents. You're close to 3,000 folks, employees and dependents that are covered under the Nuasis County plan.
And that's the 3,000. I knew there was a 3,000 number somewhere in there. Thank you. I appreciate that. I knew I wasn't making that up. So, we insure 3,000 people. Sorry. That's, is that what you did, right? Is that what you said? With all the dependents and everything?
Yes, it's just shy of 3,000.
That's a, that's a big number.
Total employees and dependents.
I knew that 3,000 stuck in my head. For some reason, I was thinking, how did I get that in my head? Okay, go ahead. Sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you, sir. My apologies.
Yes, as you can see, even with the external agencies, just 50 employees added additional 80 with their dependents. So, yes, that number is credible. John just stated. But I wanted to get this information out to you, Judge. I did ask Boone Chapman and the County Auditor's Office for all claims history for the past four years. I was provided with the claims and also the premiums paid. It was stated that by the County Auditor's Office, to their credit, that the prescription was not included in those amounts. So, we can get that to you soon for you to further consider. And it could, to your point, really turn that number of 849,000 upside down very quickly because any one prescription could cost hundreds of dollars, up to 1,000, as we well know. And so, we should take that in consideration as well.
As I said, there are three years here that are a little bit way too close. And once you add prescriptions to that, they are either very close if they break even or they're cost, yes.
It should be noted that this list also includes retirees and so they're not really a separate entity. They're just not current employees. They're former employees.
That is correct.
And former employees can be on the policy forever or something? Is that part of their retirement or something?
John, can you speak more to that question in regards to retirees on our health plan?
I know, I knew.
Yeah, that's, when I saw that document, that's news to us. We thought retirees, obviously covered under the county's plan, were county employees. That may be an area that the county wants to negotiate with those entities that retirees or the plan is extending coverage only to those that are actively working. Retirees would not be eligible. I would have to defer to the county attorney on that particular issue. But it appears that, we don't know whether they're pre-65 or those that are eligible for Medicare 65 plus. I'm going to assume that they are pre-65 retirees, not eligible for Medicare, which is additional exposure that the county is taking. Extending coverage to retirees to non-county entities is an additional risk to the county.
And they're not on this list for claims and cost or anything like that? Yeah.
How many are there of those? Just to add to it.
13 and dependents are 17 total, it looks like.
Tim, wouldn't, wouldn't those retirees be included in the documents that Michelle was able to put together?
Doesn't break it out as such, but, I mean, it says.
Michelle is here. Michelle, do you have any information regarding the claims for the retirees?
No, that was not requested.
You have to.
Probably didn't ask it.
Thank you. Can you hear me? That was not requested. I'd have to review the plan doc again as far as coverage being extended to anyone from the outside entities that they had retired. In my time here, we have had a few that retired from outside entities, but they did not go on the county's plan. I'm not sure if they were eligible or not. I do have to check into that. But former employees are. What's not in the plan document is there's no restriction on age as far as being over 65, under 65. There's no cutoff. So, the retirees that we currently cover, some are over 65.
That are, that are from, that are from nonentities?
No, no, no. We do not have anyone currently on our plan. Haven't had anyone on our plan in the past 10 years. I can only speak to that because I've been here that long.
Of nonentities?
Nonentity retirees. No. They've always been for former employees.
What was the 13 year?
They're Nuasis County, former Nuasis County employees.
County employees. None from the.
But are they available, if they want to, can they?
The other.
You're saying you don't know because you didn't ask that question?
Yes, I haven't been asked that question. I have to check.
And was, was that done to do this to retirees through, we don't have an MOU or a court or discussion on that one, a vote? There's nothing on that?
No, Your Honor. I was only asked to look at the external agencies and the claims history for that. So, I didn't take in consideration the claims for those retirees. That information, to Michelle's point, was not requested because they were former employees.
But it's not part of our county policy when you retire, this is available or anything that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of. Michelle, can you speak to that?
There's no policy manual because they do have to, when they go through HR, they have to state whether or not they accept or decline. If they decline, then we keep that on record. And the, I want to say the practice has been that once you decline initially, you don't get to come on the plan after you've retired and maybe realize some life events and you want to come on the plan.
Recording stopped. One of the participants.
Oh, okay.
If however, they decide to be on the plan, there's no age restrictions. Say you have reached Medicare age, you are now dropped from the plan. There's nothing like that in the plan document.
So, even for the retirees, if age were a factor, they should be available for, be able to apply for Medicare at a certain age. And so, I don't believe it would be any adverse impact if you eliminate them from the plan as well with due notice.
I think you'd also have to take into consideration for active employees who are Medicare eligible. There's no restrictions for them in the plan as well, if you consider an age restrictions.
Just for clarification for the court, anybody that is actively at work, Medicare eligible, age 65 and over, the court's plan is primary. That's a long statute passed in 1986 called the Working Age Provision of Cobra. So, that's, that's something the court cannot, cannot change. But those that are no longer working, the court can decide whether they want to extend coverage to retirees pre or post 65. And I would defer to any state statute that requires the county to provide that type of coverage.
Yeah, I think that's kind of a, we need to, we can certainly look at that one, but I don't know if we're prepared to do anything with that today, that part of it because I wasn't even aware that was something to discuss. But, I mean, I think we got enough on our plate today to deal with. And I, you know, I've got more questions on the, I mean, I'll come back to this and let everybody think about it or whatever. And at some point, I'll make a motion, win or lose, but.
We're just in the workshop right now. We'll come back to the court. Yes.
I was going to say at some point. And then I guess my next line of questioning, unless somebody else says something on this, is regarding the grandfather clause stuff. How does that, what's the pros and the cons of staying in the grandfathering? The con is we can only increase rates a certain amount when we know we're not increasing enough and we're going to get hammered and continue to get hammered. So, what's the advantage of staying now with the grandfather?
Good question. And we have that information available for you and have been provided to you. Since the external agencies were such a burning question, I started off with that first. But now we can move into discussion regarding the grandfather clause and the premium contributions that we have before us, which currently show us to be at a significant deficit. But if you would like to address your question first, Commissioner, regarding our advantages or disadvantages of being on the grandfathered plan, McGriff has provided some information to us. And John, would you move forward with explanation of that?
I got it.
Unless the court has any other questions regarding the external agencies.
Well, I mean, I read what you put in there. I just would kind of like you to give me, and for the public, right? That doesn't read everything that we put online, just what the advantages and disadvantages are.
Yeah, Commissioner, thank you. Let me make a couple of comments and I'm going to ask my associate, Alicia Dominich, to provide some additional clarity. The plan currently is a grandfathered plan. However, the plan has adopted, has adopted many of the ACA compliance issues over the years. Yes, there are some restrictions on how much you can change employee contributions. Yes, Commissioner, there are restrictions in how much you can change the plan itself of raising a deductible or a copayment. But in the conversations with Tim, the amount of increase that the county's considering for employee premiums is substantially less than the clause. So, that's really not an issue. The county's not interested at this point in changing its plan. So, that's really not an issue. So, in essence, you know, the grandfathered statute really doesn't, it doesn't reflect one way or the other the flexibility or lack of flexibility of the county. Alicia, would you add some additional clarity?
Correct. Just to echo those sentiments, the insurance premium restrictions do not apply to a large employer group. So, you do have the flexibility to maintain that grandfathered status. When you get away from the grandfathered status, you have more constraints regarding your, the documents that have to be provided. You cannot increase your out of pocket maximums when you're grandfathered more than 15%. It's more plan design versus anything else, really. I mean, you don't have those constraints on your contributions. And even if the percentage is like 15% plus five, right? So, you, I mean, we're still well within the constraints of that.
And I thought that was part of the reason we delayed this last time was because you said we couldn't increase rates any more than what was being proposed, Tim. I mean, I know the McGriff folks left and we shouldn't have let them leave. That was, you know, our bad. But that was the whole thing was I thought, maybe I'm, maybe I'm not remembering right, but I thought that was what we were told was, and maybe they're saying something different, that we can't increase the rates any more than the 7% or whatever it is we're looking at.
Commissioner, I may have misunderstood what McGriff stated in that particular areas. They are the experts, Alicia specifically, on the grandfathered plan. And they have, that's why they're here today to give us counsel on that matter regarding our rates. But one of the most significant disadvantages I find of the grandfathered plan is our ability to provide a defined health and wellness plan, which we're restricted for being able to do under the grandfathered plan. And in essence, it's the preventative maintenance. It helps people to identify potential chronic diseases and illnesses early enough to get treatment before they become chronic and terminal. And so, we won't be able to offer those type of incentives in our, in a health and wellness plan because of the grandfathered plan, because we're prevented from doing so by the Affordable Care Act. We can't have any adverse impact on those that don't participate in a defined health and wellness plan. In other words, we can't increase the rates for those parties if they fail to comply with our health and wellness initiatives.
Where you can if you're not grandfathered in? Like if we create a health and wellness to make our people healthier and well, then they don't participate, then you can ding them at a higher rate?
That is correct. John, you can confirm that statement for me, please.
Right. There's more flexibility in the incentives that one can. Right, there, there's more flexibility in the incentives, uh, that one can, uh, can develop within their plan design, um, as Tim pointed out. Um, but short term, um, it, the county, you know, is, is still has flexibility in changing its plan, uh, although the insurance committee was not interested in any plan changes. And the, uh, the seven and a half percent increase, Commissioner, is a, a, a number that we picked out as a nominal increase. Um, the county can increase contributions even more on the employees if it so chooses. Uh, there is a maximum in which you can increase, so there is room to make those increases. But, um, the county a, and the, uh, at least from my understanding, the insurance, uh, committee was hesitant to pass on much more than a seven and a half percent increase to employees at this point. So, um, I, I think that the, the crux of it all is that this is a discussion that really should, uh, be front and center as we go out for RFP and to consider different plan designs, different network configurations, uh, different configurations with respect to, uh, health and wellness incentive programs, as Tim mentioned. Those discussions probably should be happening in an RFP process and with the insurance committee. Um, and, um, you know, the, 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 the constraints of a grandfathered status are, are really largely not in play, uh, with the county as we move forward. And frankly, the vast, vast majority of all, uh, self-funded benefit plans in the country have, have, uh, in essence, moved away from a grandfathered status. Last comment, the reason grandfathered status and those plans still exist is primarily for closed classes of employees, unions with collective bargaining, or other arrangements in which the negotiation of health and welfare benefits has typically been part of, uh, a negotiation within the fringe. Those issues really don't apply necessarily to the county. And so, uh, oh, I can't think of one county plan in the state of Texas that is grandfathered. Harris County, Dallas County, Bear County, Tarrant County, Dallas County, Collin County, Denton County, uh, Midland County, Lovett County, they're, they're not, th- those are non-grandfathered plans. They have moved away, adopted all the provisions of the ACA, but the trade-off is additional flexibility in their plan design configurations, additional flexibility in their premium structures. Um, and as I mentioned, the county has largely adopted many of the, uh, over the years, the county has adopted many of the, uh, ACA requirements as sort of part of its plan. So, uh, in essence, it's sort of a moot point. Um, but again, our recommendation is, uh, at this point, uh, attack that issue during the RFP process. Um, and focus on the, the issues at hand with respect to appropriate funding. Uh, obviously, a strong open enrollment, good communications, and prepare for the RFP for, uh, upcoming this fall.
And how do we do, how do we do that as an action? Do we have to take action to, to direct that? Because you can't put out an RFP, I know we're going to have RFP discussions, but would that be the time to do it? Would be like you're saying during the RFP, for the time we would say, okay, we want to go away from it or I don't? I mean, I'm not hearing a reason to stay with grandfather, right?
John Baskin, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe, uh, I do have to come to court to request permission to go out for that RFP, and that might be the appropriate time, uh, to, for the court to send us off with that direction uh, of how y'all want us to go forward on the RFP. And we can, we'll do that process really early because I believe our intention is to go out for that RFP in December. And so we can have that request for permission to go out for RFP happen well ahead of December. Uh, give the court plenty of time to discuss that and give us good direction. How's that sound?
Commissioner Matos and I were in Austin at a TAC conference, and that was basically what was relayed to us that pretty much nobody does the grandfather clause anymore, that that wasn't something.
Well, it doesn't seem as we're, I mean, doesn't seem.
It's not necessary anymore.
Well, yeah, it doesn't seem like we're as hamstrung. I, I, based on the last conversation, I thought we couldn't raise rates because we were grandfathered, but now we're saying that's not the case either.
That's what we were told before.
So it sounds like maybe that gives us, buys us some time to, because I do like the wellness part and having some incentives and things of that nature, and if everybody's going away from it, and it sounds like we're, we're heading that direction, but that we still have some flexibility in our rates, even with the grandfather clause. So I, I, I'm fine waiting on that now that that's been cleared up, because that's not what was articulated in the last meeting, so.
If, if I might add, in regards to the health and wellness, um, initiatives that I'm speaking of, our top four categories where most of our claims are coming from are cancer, heart attack, stroke, and diabetes. By having a pre, a preventative health and wellness program in place, they can address those opportunities earlier enough to get treatment before they become chronic and terminal. Being on a grandfathered plan, under ACA, we cannot raise the rates under a health and wellness plan if they fail to, uh, comply with the requirements of a defined health and wellness plan, which requires them to get particular examinations each year to, and, and that's what I mean by preventative.
Preventive measures that they're not required to do now.
Correct.
And, uh, Johnny Hip has joined. He has asked if he could, uh, are you unmuting yourself, Mr. Hip?
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners.
Morning, John.
Yes, sir. We, we, I assume you wanted to speak on behalf of the hospital district with our discussions on possibly canceling the insurance for our outside entities?
Uh, Judge, the, uh, the, the hospital district is on the county's, or uses the county's health plan because we don't have a lot of employees and we don't have the, um, the breadth of, of the numbers of people nor the, the age spread that would get the district, uh, you know, uh, rates. We tried to do that several years ago, uh, and we couldn't get anybody to give us a proposal because we just didn't have an employees. And our employees were, I mean, the, with us, most of them, we don't have any young employees. Uh, most of them are, are middle-aged, and so, um.
Saying that, then, would the hospital district consider in the future, um, with an MOU on, um, increasing or at the end of the year, paying any additional cost to the county from their employees and their dependents that, um, go over the amount of premiums paid in up to the stop-loss amount?
Judge, we, we'd be interested in talking with you all about that. We'd like to get some historical information to have an idea of what those costs might be, uh, going forward.
That's a problem we have right now because we're not sure either.
Instead of being, um, having sort of an open-ended with a stop-loss, I mean, the district would con, would consider, you know, if, if the, if the county needed to, uh, elevate its premiums uh, to cover that, just something so we would have, uh, some ability to budget for that or, or plan for it.
Understand, yes.
And I, and I, I mean, if you look, if I, if these numbers are right, the hospi, middle district makes up about half of that fifty. So that's a big number to be able to get, and that's what I was saying earlier. They're the only entity on this list that really is a true, well, is a true partner, and I don't mean that rudely towards the other, but really and truly is, is something that they, they work with us. We do so much with them. We couldn't exist without them. And, and they have the ability to, if we had the MOU language, Judge, that you talked about with, with covering excess claims, well, okay, they've got the ability to do that better than we do. Like, we, we have less excess than they do. So, so I, I have no issue with, if, if all of them were as financially sound as the hospital district, this would be, your language would work if, but they're, the others aren't.
And that's a question, I mean, I mean, the drainage district, I mean, you could argue, they do a lot on behalf of us. I mean, this previous hurricane that we were preparing for, the tropical storm before that, they do a lot and, and it may not be the entire county, but it's a pretty good chunk of the flood plain, flood-prone areas, uh, that we have that cover precincts one and two and three, and part of that at least. Um, so they, they serve a great purpose as well, and they're really one of the.
Then we need to let everybody in, John.
They're the only functioning district. I know, but I'm just saying, if we're going to say that, that they provide a value. I mean, let's not forget the value that they provide. They've been very good partners, uh, especially in preparing for this. So I would say let's, let's be careful in that language. I understand what you're saying.
Fair.
If we can afford it, that may be one thing. I don't know what their financials are on this, but let's keep it to value because that's how, really, to be honest with you, I think that's probably how all these get in. It's because they all provide a value of some sort. Well, we don't want to leave the one employee who works in the credit union. He obviously serves a very important county function for county employees, but they're kind of left on their own. And, and, and that's how that, all those others got. So what you're intending is, I think, could work in reverse, is that's how we got here over the years. So, uh, but, but I agree with you once again. I mean, the cost, what, what you can put in, what you could have, what, what these groups can afford and pay in, uh, and, and maybe they can or should do it on their own. But we're hearing from Johnny also that, yeah, obviously, they could have anyone, but they would prefer to go with a larger plan because they'll, they'll be able to get on to a more, uh, robust plan that they couldn't do with, uh, twenty-two employees and however many dependents that they have attached.
Yeah, and let me, and let me restate, because you could argue that for all of them. I mean, like, you know, my, my ESD wanted in three, four years ago, and we said, no, we're not letting anybody else in, yet we've got an ESD that's in. So that's the problem is once you let one, how do you, where do you stop and where do you start? Uh, my comments, I guess, on the hospital district were more, they provide this county millions of dollars already of support, not, nobody else does that. And that was the point I was making. If I didn't make it right, I appreciate you letting me, you know, give me an opportunity to clear that up because there's no question the drainage district does, the ESD does, the credit, they all do things for the county. As you said, that's how they got here. But, but again, they're not Nuasis County employees, and it goes back to the root of that argument, nor is the hospital district, even though they, we couldn't quite frankly survive without them. That's a whole nother argument that, or a discussion that, you know, Johnny and I have already had conversations about that, about how we need to maybe work to be more independent than we are from the hospital district, but that's not for today's discussion, right? So I, I just think that we need to, we've got to protect the Nuasis County employees, we've got to protect the constituents that we have. And, and at the same time, we've got to mitigate our losses as much as we can. And, and, yeah, the hospital district is a big part of it, and, and if, and if we set a new standard that says, okay, you're, whatever the standard is, is fair for one, is fair for the other. If you're wanting to come in and pay the, this part and this part, and then you'll pay the excess, we'll consider you. That's going to eliminate a lot of people, unfortunately, but, I mean.
But, but I, but I think that's probably the fairest way to do that.
But it makes it a choice, and if they can't do it, they go out and get their own. But up to the stop-loss, they should be paying for their employees and their dependents. The county should not be forking out that money. It's.
Up to the stop-loss that the, you mean, that we have to cover, right, which is.
Yeah, which is the county's portion, and we should not do that, yes.
From what I'm hearing, it all depends on their budget, right?
Well, they have a choice to either join with that or go out and get their own, but.
Depends on what kind of budget they keep, uh, how they spend their money. Uh, I think they're the ones, they're the ones that might want to look into it and see how they can, uh, save some monies. And Lisa, I have this question for you. You said you had two, two, uh, accounts when we first started, that you didn't have a chance to put them in a, in a packet?
Two, two accounts?
Yeah, well, two numbers that weren't in the packet. When, when we first started.
The employee count?
Yes, yes.
And those are just active employees. I was asked that by Mr. Saleh this morning, how many current active Nuasis County employees there are. And there are one thousand, one hundred and two Nuasis County employees. And then if you add CSCD and MPO, that number becomes one thousand, two hundred and fifty.
So is that the correct number? Because I, I thought you said you were going to get, get, get back with us on that.
I, I, I gave that number just, I gave those two numbers in, a minute ago. I, they were correct.
When we first started, you said you had two items that weren't printed in the packet that you'd get, get it to us. All I'm asking is when you do.
No, I, I said that there was, that this form, what, I, I was told that there would be a column added that said eligible and ineligible. I didn't prepare the form. It was on the confidential packet, and I didn't, don't have access to confidential.
All I'm asking, like, when you do get those numbers, will that make a change in what we're talking about? I mean, will it see the more employees or less employees?
Um, Mr. Bass said no. Mr. Bass said we have enough employees that wouldn't make any change in our policy or costs and, for the employees or something.
So it wouldn't make any, it wouldn't make any change in the conversation we're having right now?
No. Did you have anything else you want to add or any other questions we want to ask about this?
Um, I, I did notice that there's a couple of mathematical errors on this, but again, they said that it didn't matter for.
There's also, we don't have the total on the prescription drugs. There's a lot of variables in here, which is why I would suggest the best way moving forward for this year in such short notice to our partners is if we could add a paragraph, a piece of language in there that makes the entity for their individuals and their employees or family members up to, I think our stop-loss is four seventy-five right now. Is it four seventy-five? Somebody correct me, four fifty? Yeah, I was told four seventy-five in the other meeting the other day, but I knew it was four fifty last.
John and Alicia, can you confirm what the stop-loss payment coverage is?
It, it's four hundred and seventy-five thousand.
That's what I thought. I was told the other day.
And then the, and the secondary insurance kicks in? Is that right?
Yes, so I, I think what I would suggest in short notice for those of us who don't want to drop our partners and appreciate this stuff just this year in short notice would be anyone that is wanting to continue would have to sign current MOUs with that language in there that they are responsible for that portion of their employees and their dependents if they go above the amount, yeah. Up to the four seventy-five that the county, we just can't take on everybody's problems like that. The risk is too high for the county, given the situation we're in, or they can refuse and go out and get their own. That, that's a choice that they would have to make if you want to sign on with that paragraph or if, to me, seems like the easiest solution for us right now.
Judge, I'd ask you to keep in mind that I put on next court's agenda, our, uh, stop-loss, uh, insurance is for renewal uh, by the end of the month, so I put it on seven seventeen court agenda. And then some recommendations presented by McGriff on what we should do with that, so.
So is that number not included in these premiums that we have right here?
Do they pay, do they pay their portion of the stop-loss?
Do they pay for that? Yeah, exactly.
John, can you answer that question?
Do the outside entities pay their portion of the stop-loss insurance premiums? Because that ought to be included too, if they're going to participate.
I don't believe the answer to that is yes.
No, they don't.
That's another problem than that.
That, the stop-loss, the premium is, that's a, that's a fee to the county.
Right, so, and, and.
To all our partners, let's be clear if you're listening in, is like, the, this is, you know, we, we know previous courts have made these decisions. We are not taking this situation lightly. But in light of the county's budget that we've been faced with, and in light of what they are telling us, our insurance is, um, going to be lacking, and this year, need funds put in, and then next year, anticipation, uh, there's, we have to do something. There's, we can't continue ourselves like this.
So, okay, so is what you're saying, Judge, because if you're saying that.
I think they should pay their total premiums, whatever it is, and their portion of the stop-loss as well. If that's a cost to the county, they should have a portion of that.
And anything over the stop-loss, their, whatever their claim is over the stop-loss.
To, like, our claims right now go, if you have a hospital stay or whatever, if it's three hundred and fifty thousand, the county does that. If it goes over four seventy-five, that's when the other insurance kicks in.
Ri- right, but where, so in other words, how, how do you, how do you word it? I get, their portion of the stop-loss premium is easy, but let's say when we get, where is it that we get hit that we have to cover them over the stop-loss, right? So if their claim goes over.
The stop-loss is what covers everybody. We get hit with any claim up to the stop-loss.
Right, so they would have to pay their portion of the premiums and anything not covered at the stop-loss. I'm not saying it right, but whatever the gap is,
Yes.
they would have to pay that gap, right?
For their, their liability, their employees or something.
So you want us to negotiate where they pay their premiums, uh, for the plan, their stop-loss premium portion, correct?
Just like the county does.
And then any and all claims. And then any and all claims up until the stop loss, where the whole group is protected?
Yes.
Right.
Okay.
But if we're going to continue this, I think that's only fair, because that's.
I would, I would think, I would, I would support that for a year until we go back out and have everybody have some time. If that's okay with everyone, I'm willing to do that, because that mitigates our liability. And it gives them time to go, look, and I don't, no offense to Johnny either, Johnny, I was going to come back to you. I don't agree. I don't, I think I've got a really nice plan, and I don't have, I don't have 25 employees on my plan. I got 25 or 30 employees, but they're not all on the plan. And I've got really reasonable and good insurance. And I think there are plans out there, because it says you have 23 people. I don't know if that's right, but it says hospital district has 23 on there. So I would hope that y'all would go look again at least. But if we can do that, Judge, if you're, if you're willing, you know, to support that and everybody else's, to make a motion to say, look, like, immediate, starting now, okay, we won't cut you off this year. Maybe where we're headed, May, but, I mean, but if what we're saying is, they got to pay their, not only we got to pay their employer part and employee part, which I think they are all paying.
They are, they are, yes.
Then they also got to pay their portion of the premiums for stop loss. And they got to pay the number up to the stop loss. You know, their portion of the claims, great. Now, I still don't think some of them can do it. I mean, meaning, we got to check them financially to see if they can do it. But I don't think some of them can even do it. I mean, it's better than nothing, and at least the hospital district would be half of, we reduce half the litigation, half the liability, because they have 23 of the 50 employees. Now, 23 employees, I don't know what they total.
On dependents or anything like that, yeah.
They're 56, so they're only 56 of the 130. So we're still hanging out there with a lot of exposure, so, but we got, you know, if they're willing to do it and they can financially do it, then that's better than where we are now. And I mean, I love it, but.
The, the stop loss, the 475?
I don't know what it is.
Is that going to go up? Do we know if that's going to be?
We're not sure, so that will be open, so.
That's why it's got to be generic language, just says whatever it is.
Yeah, their portion, I mean, we spread it because of the numbers, but the county shouldn't be paying for that solely anyway, yes.
So, yeah, Johnny, call me later. I'll help you find a good insurance person if you need one. Because my, my plan's.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
My plan's pretty good, and I don't have as many employees on it as you do. Not anywhere near. You've got, you've got.
Maybe our county employees should go to the hospital district.
Well, yeah, you've got, but he's got 56 total covered people. I don't have that many, and my plan's pretty, pretty good and pretty reasonable. I mean, it's not awesome.
It was, it was a while back, and we were looking for plans that, you know, had, you know, deductibles people could afford and stuff like that. But we'll work with the court and do whatever y'all want to do.
Thank you, we appreciate that. Any other?
Do you have a motion, Judge?
Well, we have to come out of the workshop and go into the regular, sorry.
I mean, I'm finding the workshop, we can, I can ask during the regular.
Are you ready to go do the regular then?
Yeah, I mean, I'll still.
We still have to do the proposals.
What proposals?
The rates.
Well, we still got to talk about those rates.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
That's, that's the sticky.
Kind of extra problem we threw on top of every other problem, I mean.
We have something else to do, sorry.
Two hours probably of discussion on those.
Well, no, I mean, it is what it is. I mean, I think, I don't think we're charging enough on the rates. And, but I'm not going to sit here and argue it all day long. It's either going to be what it is, or we're going to go up, or, I don't think that's two more hours. I just don't, I don't, I mean, because just the question, Lisa or whoever was, at this, at this increase in rates, how much, didn't we have a big projection on what that was going to put us in the hole? That we're not even getting, we're not even close to charging what we should be charging to anybody. I mean, it's.
The increase would be 150,000.
That's correct, that's correct.
We don't need additional.
It has been stated in several commissioners' courts long before this that you wanted to know about these unanticipated big transfers that we had to do at the end of the year ahead of time. The only way that I can tell you about that ahead of time is to project it now, whenever we're setting these rates. And again, whenever you set these rates, that determines how much money you're going to have in the self-insurance fund available. And if we don't have enough to cover the claims, that's whenever we have to pull and transfer funds from the general fund to cover. And so in order to prevent those unknown transfers at the end of the year, you have to sufficiently budget your premiums at the beginning of the year for both employees and employers.
And those numbers are right now anticipated. 3,150,000 with the suggested increase in the employee person, or portion.
I believe it was a 3 million deficit.
Mm-hmm, yes.
John, you can correct me.
Additional funds needed in there.
You don't need to stop saying John, because I'm looking up every time.
I heard Lisa earlier, and I heard Lisa, and I was like, what?
I'm like, what, what are you saying?
Exactly.
What are you saying to me?
Mr. Bass, could you, could you please correct me? It is a 3 million deficit?
For this plan year ending 9/30/24, the deficit is projected to be approximately 2.5 million.
And then for the.
And I want to make a clarifying statement that when we calculate the necessary rates to fund the plan, we calculate all expenses to the plan, not just claims. We calculate administrative expense, stop loss insurance, obviously, medical and pharmacy claims, and then the other administrative costs go into the calculation of premium rates. So if you set your premium rates correctly, including stop loss, there was some discussion just a moment ago on that, then you can charge the outside entities the appropriate amount for all services. So that's, you know, the county is a self-insured. You're funding your own plan, you're not paying it to a third party. It's, it's an internal budget process, as Lisa commented. We're just simply showing what the county needs to allocate for their self-insured plan, certainly for this upcoming plan year.
And what are you showing that to be? What are you showing that to be? What is your recommendation that we need to be doing to properly fund?
Could be put up, I can share my screen, or whoever is sharing the screen, I can go through a couple of the scenarios.
And then also think about this one. What's your opinion on going out for not a self-insured and going to, since we're spending so much on insurance, should we be bidding this out to an insurance company and not be self-insured? So that's another question for you that I forgot I had, so.
I was going to ask that.
Yeah.
Tim, which, which visual should we be looking at?
If you would go to your five-year glide path that shows the deficit where we currently are in regards to our current health plan?
Which page is that? Trying to figure out where you're going.
I know that I gave that to you in the previous commissioners' court. I'm not sure if I presented that.
That, on that page that you were just at, that 2025 was the number that I was using.
Five-year glide, you want me to go to the five-year glide plan?
I think what we're initially asking right now is, what is the county's budget for next year anticipation to be?
Well, what is?
Portion, the county's portion.
I want to know what he recommends.
Yes.
So that we don't lose our tails again.
That's where we're getting ready to get into commissioners and judge.
That, that right there, that was, oh.
No.
You, there you go.
Wait, go back one, or wait, that one's the one?
I'm looking for the five-year glide path from May 2024 that shows the.
That was there.
Projected deficit.
Wait, you had it, Connie, right there.
Okay, that.
I have to share the screen.
That's fine, right there. I can see it, everybody can see it.
That one, you can see the 2025 deficit is, it says it in the, under 2025, they're projecting 3,449, 449,019. And that's what I'm.
God.
That's the amount that, that is underfunded or anticipated to be underfunded. It could be more, but that's historically.
Why does it go down so much in '26 and '27? Because we're, you're anticipating a rate increase?
Yes.
Put in the employer contributor.
Okay, so how do we avoid, what do we, I'm sorry, Mr. Bass, what do we need to do, in your opinion, to avoid this 3.5 million dollar loss in '25? I mean, it's that simple.
What this glide path shows is the deficit going from left to right. It shows what the projected deficit will be for plan year ending 9/30/24, roughly 2.5 million dollars. The plan will not collect enough revenue through your funding rates to cover your plan expenses. What we're suggesting, and that's, that's something the county will have to deal with once the plan year closes, and how the county wants to deal with that deficit. What we really want to concentrate on today is we don't want to have a known deficit at the end of plan year 2025, ending 9/30/25. And what we're suggesting is, the county needs to increase its funding rates, either all by the county or in some part by employees, by roughly 3.5 million dollars. That's roughly the break-even point. And notice that we calculate all expenses, projected medical claims, pharmacy claims, administrative costs, stop loss insurance, et cetera. So it's an all-in review of plan expenses. And the goal is to obviously break even, or at least not knowingly underfund the plan.
And so what is it going to take? I know, you can say it's 3.5 million. What's your suggestion on how that breaks down, based on your knowledge, I'm assuming, of the county budget and the employee rates and so forth? What is the recommendation? Because obviously, the 7.5% is not getting us there, so what gets us there? Like, what's your recommendation for this?
Sure, if you, if you look at that 2025 column, what we're suggesting is, in this scenario, the county does not change employee contributions. So their premiums that they deducted from their paycheck twice a month, those do not change. The county makes up the entire difference, which is roughly a 29% increase to the county portion of the plan.
And that's your recommendation?
Employee contribution increase zero, employer, which is the county contribution increase.
No, Mr. Bass, I'm asking what your recommendation is. We hired you to make a recommendation. You're recommending that we eat every time of it, and employees don't? Is that what you're recommending? I'm asking, is that your recommendation?
This is one scenario, Commissioner. If we go to the next page, there's a second scenario, a second page. And again, we're getting the direction from the insurance committee.
That's not what I'm asking, Mr. Bass. I'm asking you. You are a professional that we have hired to help us through this. What is your recommendation? You see this all over the state of Texas. You just rattled off 10 counties that you have knowledge of. What do other counties do? What is your recommendation? Is your, what, I just need to know what your recommendation is. I get what the insurance, I get it, but I need to know what your recommendation is.
So, John, maybe you might want to go to scenarios five and six, which specify that we have salary-banded recommendations to help us get out of the deficit that we're in. John and I worked on this tirelessly to try to get that information to you so that you would have enough information to make a decision.
One of the other suggestions in the insurance committee, Commissioner, was, it's too late this year, but as John has been, Commissioner Modus, I'm sorry, has been trying to push for the last couple of years, us going out for bids and getting away from this as well.
Getting, going out for bids, not to self-insure?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I think we all like that idea. We've done that before, it hadn't played out.
This suggestion with this on the 7.5%, and this was in the meetings just to get us through this year and changing next year, but we have to have enough time to go out for bids.
But, okay, but wait. This is still showing a 3.5 million dollar contribution, and I know, given the different scenarios, I'm asking Mr. Bass, based on what he sees in other counties and what he recommends to clients, what is his recommendation? And I'm asking your opinion.
Well, if, Commissioner, to answer your question, if the county does not want to run a deficit for its, for its self-insured plan, it needs to increase its contributions into the plan through premium rate increases. Substantially through the employer portion. And we recommend increasing employee contributions by a modest amount. 7.5% increase is a modest amount.
Very modest. So your, your recommendation is, is that the county, that the county come up with, I'm trying to get to your 7.5% deal, that we would have to come up with how much more, and the employees would pay how much more?
Connie, can you put up scenario five and six?
Roughly 3, 3.2 million dollars in the balance from, which is a couple hundred thousand dollars from employees. Now, you can raise employee contributions if you'd like. Commissioner, I'm not, I'm disputing your, your comment. I'm just simply saying that the county has underfunded its self-insured plan for a number of years.
And we're doing it again this year. If, in other words, unless we go find 3 million dollars somewhere in our budget to fund it, right? 3.2, you're saying 3.2 of the 3.5, we need to put in 3.2. And your recommendation, based on what you see from other counties around the state, is that the employees should pay 250,000, so they ought to, let's see, let me, let me do that real quick. So 250,000 divided by 3.5 million, county ought to pay 93% of that. The employees should pay 7, and we should pay 93, and that's your recommendation to this court, right? Just making sure I'm clear, because that's what you're saying. You want us to pay 93, and the county employees to pay 7, right?
The county has discretion if it wants to increase employee contributions more than 7.5%.
I get that, but I'm asking for your recommendation, based on what you see around the state. What do other counties do? I get you don't want to answer this question, but answer it.
Portions of their policies.
I get the 3.5. I'm asking you, what you're saying is, you're recommending today a 7.5% increase, which is basically the county paying 93%, and the employees paying 7 for this increase. Is that your recommendation, yes or no? And if it's not, what is it?
So, John, I did ask you to.
Tim, I'm not asking you. I'm asking for Mr. Bass. Please let him answer the question. I've asked it six times, and I haven't gotten an answer yet.
Yeah, Commissioner, you cannot, you cannot fund the deficit on, through employee contributions. Even if you doubled employee contributions, that would not come close to funding your deficit. Over the years, the county has picked up the vast majority of the cost share for the self-insured plan. So even if you raised employee contributions, if you doubled them.
What is your recommendation, Mr. Bass? You don't need to keep explaining it to me. I understand, we've gotten ourselves in this box. We haven't done it because we haven't had the political wherewithal to do it. So what is your recommendation today so that I can move on from this question and get off of this? What are you recommending, based on what you see all over the state and all these counties you work with? Quit hedging, just answer it. If you don't want to make it, say, I don't want to make a recommendation. That's your choice, I'll move on. But I need a recommendation, or I need you to say I'm not making one?
Commissioner, I can't make a recommendation, because I'm putting scenarios in front of the court to, to review, to determine what is the appropriate, the appropriate path for at least this next plan year. The bottom line is, the county, if it does not want to have a deficit for next plan year.
I know.
The county will have to substantially increase its portion of the premium rates in order for that deficit to, to go away.
Okay, we can move on, because he doesn't want, he doesn't want to answer my question, so that's fine. I just can't get, I mean, that's not a recommendation. That's an explanation that we all know. So you're not making a recommendation, you're just putting out scenarios, and we have to choose without your recommendation. That's not helpful, but, okay, that's your position. I'll move on, go ahead, sorry.
Commissioner, if I may, I did ask John to give a break-even analysis for us, which would address your question. John, can you show that information for a break-even analysis? What the county would have to put into the plan to actually?
I know that, that's been answered. That wasn't my question, but that's okay. I know exactly what we have to do. 3.5 million bucks in some way, shape, or form.
Okay.
Thank you. That's about as unimpressive as I get.
So we presented several scenarios before the court today to decide how you would like to proceed in regards to employee rates. Obviously, you see that we are at a significant deficit, and will continue to be so over the next five, four or five years that have been laid out before us. And so we need to decide today, in consideration of open enrollment occurring in less than two weeks, whether we're going to raise the employee rates, increase our employer contribution, or leave it at the same rate that it is. We haven't had an increase on the. We haven't had an increase on the non-ETNA plan, on the ETNA plan, for six years, and we haven't had an increase on the SPA network for the past four years. And so it isn't in our best interest to continue not increasing the rates, and to absorb the majority of the deficit that we have before us.
Yep. This issue, it's not because of lack of political wherewithal. I think that it's very been, very intentional, deliberate, and it goes across political philosophy. And so I think if anyone would have told you, if he was still here, would have been Lloyd Neal, as an insurance man, understanding it the best of why he kind of set that policy, and even county judges and courts before that, and it's been continued, is one. Oasis County does not pay its employees the rates that it should be across the board, period. That is a deliberate action, whether intentional or unintentional, has been deliberate, and what we've taken in the budget year after year. We have not taken on a bigger burden to ensure that our employees are paid the wages that they should across the board, that are moving to smaller counties in our area, because they're not being paid what they can be, or what they deserve to be. That's part of the problem. So what we've tried to do is make that up by saying, "We get that we're not going to pay you what your job should be paid closer to," and instead, we're going to make up that difference with health care. It's been paid off one way or the other. That's why we're here. It's not because we've been derelict in what we should have, or have been doing as a court. We've known very good and well why we did this. I agree, it's gone across the political spectrums, no matter what. We see this as, this is a give that we've always tried to give employees. Unfortunately, we're in the time where the numbers, the tax relief that we would get from big industry has not been able to keep up with that. We've had protests from large industry, large property taxpayers in our community that are not making up that difference. And so now, we're seeing a huge burden on the rest of us. And so that's how and why we're facing what it is. I mean, there are some bigger issues that we need to look at, yes. At some point, we should and need to stop and say, "Yes, we can't keep paying in, as the county, all this amount, and just taking the burden away." But we've done it to kind of soften the blow, because when you only give a small percentage increase of a salary increase, if we give one, which we've been pretty good about trying to do that every year, the last several years especially, it's still not keeping up with inflation, or the going rate for that position in other counties. So it's a mixture of things. It's not to, I would say, it's not that we put our blame on ourselves. I mean, in the end, we could have taken better steps, I think, as a county. I mean, we have wanted to have tax relief, even in prosperous, more prosperous times, and in times now where it is more difficult, it hurts even more. And really, one of the only solutions to that would be looking at bringing something that's more equitable, to be able to keep our budget the way that it is, and continue to have it grow. I mean, everything is growing, the price of everything is going up, nothing is going down. So this is one of those things as well. But I think we're on the right path with the discussion that the Commissioner and others have brought up, is that we need to look at, how much of a burden do we put on the employee? How much do we put on these other entities that have been part of our program for so year, so many years? Those are all legitimate concerns, and I think that we do need to heavily weigh those out, but give adequate notice. The only one that I think was truly monitoring was obviously Mr. Hip with the NCHD, but there's going to be other partners after our votes are taken now, and into the future, that we do our best to inform them, that they need to be aware of these steps, because it has a direct impact and burden on their budgets as well. They may be moving along and not realizing that it's going to, the rug's going to be pulled from under them, and because of a policy that we've carried out throughout the years. But I think in concert, I do agree with a lot of what is said. I think how we got here, that's up for what interpretation I think would allow. But I do want us to be more responsible. I do expect that we should be. I know that we do need to have employees put in more, but how do we do that if we're not increasing the salary? I mean, it's all tied in, so it's not just one section or another. I know that it's difficult. I think, no matter which consultant that we would have here today, it would be difficult for them to answer some of those questions, but we do need some clarity. We do need a specific yes or no, so that we can know, are we asking the right questions? Are we taking the right steps in this policy, in this step moving forward for this next year? I do agree with the judge. We hope, we expect to see some relief next year, once we are able to go out for a new health plan. But the market could be totally different, and we could be paying even more than we are now. We just don't know that. But our anticipation is, is when you renew, typically, the rates are going to be at least lower in the first few years, and maybe that's the best way that we can try to keep these insurance policies honest. So it's a lot to look at, it's a lot to juggle. It's, but like I said, we're going to have some surprised individuals, both employees and/or partnering entities, or entities that at least have been able to latch on to our program over the years. But it is what we need to do, and I think it's a precursor, Judge, for what we have to look at in the upcoming budget workshops, and the adopted budget later this year.
Thank you, John.
Those are great comments, and it brings a debate that I had with Lloyd over this all those years ago, which was, the county employees will never know how much we are subsidizing their insurance by millions of dollars that we're saving. All they look at is their bottom line that goes into their pockets, right? They look at the rates they make, the salaries they make, and the benefits. Lloyd was, you're right, he was dead-set on doing it this way, but I always said, but the county employees just aren't going to hear loudly and clearly how many millions of dollars we're subsidizing their insurance for. They just want raises. And so you're right, this is going on...
And this has been getting a raise with our insurance premiums go up, but we've been covering that cost, so all these employees that think they're not getting one.
Right, and they don't, and understandably, they don't get it, because they don't watch this, they don't listen to everything. They just go, "Man, I'm only making this amount of money." But if they knew how many millions of dollars this county was subsidizing their insurance, they might think differently. Or, had we started doing what Lloyd didn't want to do all those years ago, we wouldn't be sitting here having to subsidize, and we could give more raises, because the subsidies could have gone to raises instead of subsidizing insurance. So it's, I'm not saying we should overburden them with the increase. I was just trying to get the guy to answer a question, so that we could make an intelligent decision, based on what other counties do, of which he hasn't done for me yet, and won't do, and I'm not going back there. But you're right, I mean, that was a debate that, because Lloyd would say, "No, I want to do insurance." And I'd say, "Lloyd, they're not going to get that. Like, they're not going to understand how valuable that is to them." And I mean, look, this is a prime example. So if we do this, based on scenario whichever, and we go 7.5%, and they go up by $200,000, and we put in $3.2 million, you know how far that would go if we could do that in raises? And instead of, we're having to do it in subsidies for insurance, that a lot of them just, they don't, they don't, they just don't know. They don't even know they're getting this thing, because they don't see it in their paychecks. And I don't blame them, so I don't know how we get where we're getting, or how we get to where we're going, because we can't come up with $3.2 million. I don't know, we'd have to raise the taxes out the wazoo. We're going to have to phase it in, too, or we're going to end up with another deficit next year, which, I mean, it's a bad spot. It's just a really bad spot.
And then we would hit the tax cap as well, anyway, more than likely.
Oh, my gosh.
We won't get anything, exactly.
So, I'm sorry I was late, I had to talk to the point of it. So do we know, we know exactly what a fund balance is right now?
We do, yes.
The fund balance for...
Healthcare.
For healthcare fund? Yes, it's provided on the attachments, I believe. I'm sorry, I didn't see the attachments before they were attached to the agenda.
Okay, how about the county's fund balance?
And there's stuff that's marked confidential, but I don't have access.
How about the county's fund balance? What's the fund balance for the county right now?
For the general fund? I, I'm sorry, I didn't come prepared with that number at this particular moment. I can get that for you.
Yeah, but it's hard to make decisions up here, too, without knowing what we're looking at.
I did get the balance for the self-insurance fund, and I believe it is attached.
Is it 1.9, wasn't it, the other day, or something? But that's probably changed.
Yes, I believe it was 1.968 was the budget surplus, is what we discussed previously.
Yes, but it would still be lacking next year, would still need the additional $3 million in there, no matter what we're anticipating ending the year up with.
And so Commissioners and Judge, I wanted you to know, the reason why we looked at a 7.5% increase was to lessen the blow of what we actually have to contribute to the plan, to be totally in the black. And I believe, John, that number was somewhere upwards of $6 million total, that is needed to get us out of the black over the course of the next, I mean, get us out of the red over the course of the next four years. The 7.5% is a modest number. It does require the county to absorb a huge percentage of about 27.8%, which would be the increase. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you're saying 7.5% over what they're doing now?
Correct, yes.
So what would be the total amount?
So, Connie, can you show them scenarios five and six, proposals five and six? That is in your, the packet that I have before you, Commissioner, in the red envelope. Should, I think the third to the last handout there shows proposals five and six. There's a couple of ways that we can approach this. In consideration of what you were saying, Commissioner, especially for our law enforcement, who work really hard and put their lives at risk every day, we did come up with a salary banded contribution scenario, which would mean 0% increase for those that make $50,000 and less, and we have those numbers before you as well. John, do you want to speak more to that?
Let me just say a couple moments, you know, and we, law enforcement, of course, always up in the front lines, and we always have taken care of law enforcement, we always, and we have a right to do that. But you know, sometimes I just get tired of hearing, only certain groups are doing more than other groups. And I know this law enforcement puts a life on the line all the time for us, and they do a job nobody else wants to do. But our employees do a good job, too. I mean, employees keep this county going, you know? If you're not for the employees, we wouldn't be going nowhere. We wouldn't have what we have. So it takes everybody together to make it work, you know? And I just, I don't want to always say, "We're going to take care of this group, because they're the best, or because they're the most whatever, and not this group," because, why? Because they're clerks, or because they're department heads, or because, I don't know, I don't know. To me, they're all important.
You're correct, Commissioner.
You know, I don't want to say, "We're going to do 7% here, we're going to do 4% over here." Why?
7.5% across the board is more what you think is, yeah.
You know, and if we're already taking 7.5%, you're taking another 7, that's almost 15%. So I don't know if I would go for 15%. But anyway, I just need to look at what we, we need to look at everything across the board, man. I'm not, I don't want to start splitting groups up. I think all our employees, or important employees, all employees make this county run, you know, and they all should be considered as essential employees.
Agreed.
That's my feeling.
We did have that option for salary banded, for those that make less than $50,000, which is about 70% of our employees. And so that's one of the reasons why you have the salary banded contributions before you. Even a 7.5% increase is not a significant amount. For example, an employee only currently pays $39.10 bi-weekly, and that amounts to about an increase of $42.03, so less than $3 increase for that group. And for the employee-plus family, we're looking at about a $38 increase per month, per pay period. So even a 7.5% is not an aggressive number, taking into consideration what Commissioner Marrez pointed out, is an incentive to continue working with the county, because we do have a robust plan. And I believe John stated previously that we contribute about 85% employees, 15% in terms of what we provide to the employee for the health plan. So some scenarios have been presented to you, so that you could decide which way we should go forward, if you want to do a cross-the-board increase, if you want to do a salary-banded increase, or if you want to do no increase. I want to present all of that information to you, so you can know what we're looking at, and have that information to decide.
I'd like to know, how is it going to affect the ones that are doing $30,000, $35,000, not just the $50,000 or $60,000? Because those are borderline...
Yes, sir.
Priority level, borderline, which is 30, 35, you know, and they're going to do another 7.5. How's it going to affect them?
Well, to answer your question, Commissioner, I do do some coaching by walking around. I listen to what the employees say. Even right now, currently, with the current rates that we offer employees, it's still a strain on their actual income, and any increase would be an additional burden. For those that make less than $30,000 a year, you know, by the time they get their taxes taken out, they might be bringing home $1,200, $1,500 a month.
I agree.
If they have to pay their rent out of that, their car payment, and insurance, and any copays, they're basically left with, they may be in a deficit by the end of the month, when it comes to trying to pay their bills. So it's a good point to consider, and I do listen to employees, and I take that in consideration. Any increase, in consideration of everything going up, food costs, health expense, everything, gas is almost $4 a gallon. So I understand the burden that it places on employees accordingly.
But if we don't do, if, let's just say hypothetically, we had this pool of money, and we went in, and whatever way we did it, we said, "We're going to budget the $3.5 million." Aren't we going to be in the same hole again next year?
Yes, sir.
How are we going to ever get out? That's my question, is we can't, I mean, let's say we said, "You know what? We're going to suck it up one year, we're going to fund this $3.5 million, we're going to be reasonable to employees, and we're going to pay the whatever chunk of it we decide to pay, since we can't get a recommendation from our consultant." So what stops it from happening again next year? Nothing, right? We can't, I mean, I don't know how we get out of this hole. And I think, too, we want to also remember that the motion that we made on limiting social services was that all of that savings goes towards raises this year for employees, so that needs to be factored in when you're doing, because I want to, I agree with Commissioner Gonzalez, I want to see that, too, but factor that in, because that should come into play. But at the end of the day, what's the long-term plan here? What's the long-term play on getting us out of this hole, that we're not in this forever, because we can't keep paying $3.5 million deficits down? I mean, we just, I don't know what to do. We either have to get another plan, that, you know, we paid, you know, to a third party that we never have been able to do in the past, for some reason, I don't, you know, know? Or we just have to know, we're just hosed, and we're going to have to put that as a budget challenge every year.
Every year.
I think the answer to your question, Commissioner, is that we need to aggressively fund the health plan to avoid any future deficits.
I need to see more, I mean, I get it, that's a great theory, but I need to see something that says, "If we do this for the next five years, or this for the next three years, or this for the next two years, then we can get here," because that little five-year glide somehow showed the number going down, but I don't understand the math on that, on how it's going to go down. So I guess by, there's some, you know, the money accumul, I don't know, but I need to understand that more, because I don't know how you're projecting that's going to go down, because we're still going to be in the hole.
Do you have those forecasts that I asked you for? John, are you still on the call?
I am. If you could show the glide path again, whoever's showing the screen. Commissioner, I can walk you through the five years, and show you where, if the county can find revenue to adequately fund the plan for '25, then the increases prospectively in '26, '27 are much more palatable. The premise here is, the county has not funded its self-insured plan appropriately, leaving the deficits. If you can bring everything back up to break even, then we know, at least the projection healthcare trend is, on average, let's call it 7, 7.5%, we're showing that in the outlying years of '26, '27, and '28. In a perfect world, nothing changes, roughly a 7.5% increase will fund the plan, keep it break even. What we do know is that we will, hopefully, the county will go out for RIP in next year, and there may be some opportunities to shave off the necessary increases through additional plan designs, or contribution scenarios, et cetera. But really, the ask here is the county to get the plan to where it is self-sustaining. And then you can begin to manage the plan, and it's a lot easier to manage a 7.5% increase versus 24 or 30. You can do that through lots of different ways. You've got many more things at your disposal. And so, especially if the county decides to... Um, and so, uh, especially if the county decides to adopt a non-grandfathered plan. Much more flexibility in plan design, as we've discussed earlier. So you're in a much better position, but really, the, the task we had from Tim was, what does it take in order for the county to get back to break even? And this is what we're trying to show you, is to, this is what it takes to get back to break even. So there will not be significant deficits each and every year.
Which number, uh, John or Tim, is the proposal for? I know we had an option to spread this over a period of time, I think it was three years that we talked about, right?
Yes, sir.
And which proposal is that one again?
John, can you speak more to that? I mean, looking at the glide path, can you just, uh, just fine tune to the number that the court needs to approve for us to actually break even?
Yeah, I think that was in the, in a previous packet, uh, Tim, but, um, in essence, uh, pay a little bit over, pay a little bit more over a three-year period, so as of, you know, twenty-twenty-seven, nine-thirty, twenty-seven, the county would be break even. This, the county still would be running a deficit, um, but the deficits would get smaller and smaller as the county put in more money. So, uh, uh, not all in, all of, uh, funding all in once. That's, that's an option. Um, if the county says, hey, we can only put in this much more, we know we're gonna run a deficit, it's gonna be smaller, uh, and we're prepared to put more in the following year, uh, that, those are options, Commissioner. So.
That, that would be something I would be more.
Various ways in order to, to, to get the fund back to break even.
That would be something I would be more inclined to start with, and we'll see what the court, uh, says. I mean, that would be my motion, is to, um, we're gonna, we're gonna eat this whole apple, but we're gonna bite it in three bites over the next three years to eliminate, um, this, this deficit. And, um, I don't know what the official language would be, because I don't have it before us, but do we have a good idea of what I'm saying, or do I need him?
Is that the three and a half million you're talking about, spread it out over three years?
The three and a half, spread it out over three years, and it would be complete by the third year, and.
It wouldn't go away.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, actually, um, then you're just, that means that we're still gonna have that end-of-year unfunded balance.
Yes, that's exactly what Mr. Bass said, yes.
And we'll have that end-of-year unfunded balance, and all the other entities, assuming that they're still participating in our insurance fund, they're not getting any of the share of that expense.
They're, they're more than likely gonna be gone. I mean, based on what it, it sounds like from this court, I mean, I think they just need to be the courtesy and giving the heads up that they're not, no, more than likely not gonna be part of this plan, unless they can show that they can be a substantial, a financial contributor, because we're paying, uh, the lion's share of this, and taking all the, all the, uh, the liability, and, and little of the benefit. So I'm, I'm not worried about that, I'm worried about the number that we see here today, which is the three point five million. I, if we wanna say, let's, let's, let's put it all on the employees, and I guess we can, but I'd like a combination of that, and say that we spread that amount over the next three years. We're committed to saying we're taking that amount on, it's not saying we're kicking that can down the road. It's we are taking that amount on. I, I feel that this is kind of the middle ground, because I'm trying to find the middle ground. I hear what, you know, what extreme is, I hear what the other, and trying to, to, to feel for the, uh, for the employees and the burden that this will put on them. I don't think the employees would wanna take it all on, I simply don't. But we are in, in a situation where we are stuck. So, uh, my suggestion would be to, uh, to put a motion, uh, that we, uh, pay the three point five million dollars, and spread that equally over the next three years, and that's my motion.
You're gonna be transferring.
We're still in workshop. We have to transfer it at the end of the year.
Yeah, you have to transfer, so you're paying the three point five million, whether you pay it as a premium, or you pay it at the, at the transfer. Either way, you're paying the three point five million.
I, I don't.
Next year.
I think it still then accumulates, because.
It's gonna accumulate.
Yes.
Because then you're gonna have another deficit next year that's gonna be added on top of, then you're gonna have another deficit on top of that that's gonna be on top of. So I don't, I, I don't think that works, but maybe I'm not hearing it.
Is that, I mean, is that right? Because I always understood that it was only gonna be the three point five, the way it was presented previously. Mr. Salee or, or Mr. Bass?
I don't know, I just don't, that doesn't make sense for me, but I, maybe there's, I'm not mistaking it, hearing it right.
Anybody wanna?
With the three and a half that they're asking us this year, saying that we will need for next year's budget, um, anticipation of that, would there be a fund balance moving forward? Is that what you're anticipating, or a break even at the end of next year, and then we're only gonna need the one point four, or one point five next year? So it doesn't do us any good to pass it, I mean, we're gonna pay it at the end of the year with a fund transfer, because you can't have a negative balance at the end of the year.
Right, yeah, no, we're gonna pay, it's just how much are we paying, and when do we pay it, that's the issue. So I'm trying to say, let's not pay it all right now.
Wait till the end of the year.
Let's wait and push it.
It, you're, you're not paying any of it right now, you're paying it through the premiums throughout the year.
Right.
And so it would be a.
Where contribution part.
Yeah, through the contributions, based on.
But that's paying it.
That's still us paying it.
Yes.
Because this is projecting, this is projecting for twenty-five, that we, that we would pay, that the employees would pay two million, and we would pay fourteen point three million. Is that what I'm reading right? Based on this projection for twenty-five? I'm on the five-year glide, May of twenty-five. I mean, it looks, this projects no increase to the, well, I don't know, I'm on scenario one, so I guess I'll go to.
The five-year glide scenario.
I, I don't know which scenario, but at the end of the day, it's, it's like.
Yeah.
It's, I mean, it's huge, like, it's just a, and this is what I'm.
The employee would pay the two point one, and then, and.
And which one are you on, Judge, which five, uh, scenario two, or?
Oh, I was on scenario one, yeah.
Right, so if you go to scenario two even, which is, I guess, the seven and a half percent increase? The employees would pay two point one, and we'd pay fourteen point one million, so, which.
Still having.
Which is an increase of the, the approximately three million.
Yes.
Because the, the employees only picking up approximately two hundred thousand.
But, yeah, required contribution, so, but, but that includes the required, that balances it. So the, the scenario twenty-five that balances it, means we would go up. So, so that means two point one one six divided by a total, I don't know how you factor in the rebates, but, uh, because the rebates are, we get back, that's revenue, right?
That's correct. Two hundred and fifty thousand on.
So, okay, so I'll do the total revenue. So we're paying fourteen, on this projection, fourteen point one seven seven million divided by seventeen, seven, two, zero, 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 zero. We're paying, under this scenario, the county's paying eighty percent of the premiums, and the employer's paying twenty. I mean, that's, um, I, I'm not saying, I mean, I'm not, that's really, I, I would, I would, and this is where I hope the employees at least appreciate, because I would welcome you to go find a plan around this state that, that the county is paying eighty percent of the employ, I mean, I don't pay that kind of premium, and no way, or I'd be.
It should be written at the bottom of the checks or something.
So, I mean, that's what I'm saying, is it's.
Yeah, but we saw that.
I, I am looking at.
I, I, I'm just saying, I, I'm saying it because I at least want the employees to acknowledge that we're paying eighty percent of their premiums. Like eighty percent under this scenario, that, that oughta, we oughta, we oughta get some credit for that somewhere, it's all, because this is.
That, that was used twice in birth versus races, and Justice was here.
But they don't remember that.
That was his thing about giving savings.
Exactly.
But it just kept on going, you know?
Exactly.
It kept on going, so, and we tried to go to private, it didn't, again, it didn't work for whatever reason. Uh, we probably should've tried harder to go to private, but we didn't, we stayed self-employed. So, uh, but I'm, I'm asking Lisa, if, uh, uh, again, I don't know what the fund balance is right now.
I think she has that right now.
I have the fund balance for you, sir, all I had to do was run the report. Um, right now, the general fund is at thirty-nine million, sixty-one thousand, four eighty-three. Now, you have to keep in, and to count that we've already collected the majority of our property taxes for the year, and so we're gonna continue, no, that's for this year, for the year that we're in, the, the fiscal year that's ending nine-thirty of twenty-four. We're at thirty-nine million, sixty-one thousand, but we've collected the majority of our revenue, and our expenses are going to continue. And so that fund balance is just gonna drop hard.
So, so what's the?
Projected is twenty-five million is what y'all brought to us not too long ago, right?
What's, what's the general fund balance right now?
The, the fund balance today, which is what he's asking for, is thirty-nine million, sixty-one thousand, four eighty-three.
General fund?
In the general fund, but again, you're gonna have a lot of expenses.
Anticipated end-of-year fund balance.
Yes, so you still have two more months of expenses, and no more revenue coming in.
Anticipated end-of-the-year fund balance is what you gave us the twenty-five at not too long ago.
So it's another twenty-eight?
The, the twenty, the estimated end-of-the-year fund balance is gonna be around twenty million, conservatively, very conservatively.
Twenty?
So we were at twenty-eight, we were twenty-eight. What happened, what happened to, we were at twenty-eight.
No, we were twenty-five last year at the end of the year.
But then we, then we went up to twenty-eight, then went back to twenty-five. So what, between twenty and twenty-five, what, I don't know what happened.
I don't either.
But the thing is, uh, because I was thinking, I thought we were still twenty-five, because they were, they just fanned off.
The fund balance at nine-thirty of twenty-three was twenty-five million, seven hundred eighty-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars. But remember, this year, we adopted the no-new revenue rate. Our revenues didn't go up. We did not collect from some of our property tax owners. Taxing entities, there you go. We, we did not collect the amount assessed. They were disputed and settled for a drastically lower amount. Therefore, revenue that was budgeted was not received, because they settled for a much lower amount than was.
But we got some.
You, you got some, but half of what.
Well, but some, we got some.
I, I, I understand half is better than nothing, but we were getting half before. But this time, half became a lot more money than it was in previous years because of the appraised values. So there was a significant chunk of our budgeted revenue that we knew we were not gonna collect, yet Commissioners Court took action to adopt the no-new revenue rate. And so, yes, I'm anticipating that the fund balance is going to take a huge hit this year.
So you're thinking we're gonna go from twenty-five to twenty, and then on top of that, we're gonna start out needing three million for this, so then we're down to seventeen.
If you, yes, so, again.
We need to know what we're voting on right here today.
Yes.
I don't wanna pay half of it, who knows?
I, remember, I know that we have an unfunded health insurance fund balance, he just said it, of two point five million this year. So even if I started off at that twenty-five that we were at, and I assumed we broke even this year, two point five million, you're gonna get mad at me if I don't disclose that I've gotta transfer that out. So taking that two point five off, that's where my twenty-three, twenty-two just came from, and that's just the math off the top of my head.
I don't think we can make a decision on our participation level today. I think all we can make it, because we don't know what it is. I don't, I don't see, we don't have good enough numbers for us to decide what to do with the reserves, or not to do with the reserves. We don't know what the reserves are gonna be, we don't know what it's gonna be. I think we have to make a decision today on how much increase we're gonna put on the, the employees, percentage-wise.
Outside entities participating.
Well, yeah, that for sure, that's different, I was, yeah, and, yeah, and the whole grandfather thing, we can wait on, but I mean, at least give us some direction on that, too, but I, I think we need, I mean, I don't know how we decide what to do today on, on our, other than the percentage on the employees, because we have to go to open enrollment, right? I mean, and that's the, to me, that's the debate.
I agree.
Because I don't know how we, how we decide.
There's no way.
We don't know what reserve, we don't, we don't have the number today.
I, again, I'm anticipating the fund balance for the general fund to be approximately twenty-two million.
That's what you're anticipating, but we don't know.
Well, no, you're never gonna know until the books are closed.
Yeah, you're never gonna know, but, but you're close, I mean, we need to be pretty close.
Twenty-two million is an extremely conservative number for you, because I know that we underfunded health insurance by two point five million. It, it's a known amount. And so I take twenty-five million, subtract two point five, twenty-two's a good number, and that's assuming that.
And we use two million, what do we use to mean?
Pay in really high, and expenses come in low.
No, she's saying funding this year, like, she's talking about, like, right now, not next year. We're talking right now, where she knows we're two and a half million in the hole.
For health insurance, and that's the reason why setting the premiums to cover the correct amount is important. Because if you don't, then again, I'm gonna be, well, Dale will be right here next year saying, hey, we need another three million. Remember that three million you, we didn't cover in premiums, we need that three million now. And you're gonna have to try to come up with three million then.
Three million gives us twenty.
I, the, the twenty, the twenty-two million, again, really rough estimate, the twenty-two million covers the two point five.
For this year.
For this year.
And then that doesn't touch, that doesn't touch the deficit for next year.
That, it doesn't touch the deficit for next year, but next year, property tax rates haven't been set, so there could be some offset there. You could offset by having property tax rates help to fund known deficits. That's the advantage of having these conversations ahead of time, instead of at the end of the year.
No, I mean, I, I mean, because I can.
Yeah.
So I think the, the proposals that are in the binder, that we have to make the decision on, like the salary ban proposal, based on the salaries and the level.
The what proposal?
The, um, the different scenario, the proposals that they have in the binder, either the county picking up a hundred percent, or the different percentages that the employees will take on, and then the options to look at the employee's share based on their salaries. Uh, they have different percentages that we would go to, are your choices. I mean, you're either gonna do a hundred percent county, or you're gonna, you have to pick.
And, and is that, is that legal to do? That's a good question, Teresa, can, can we, like, if, let's say, we decide to do an, an average of ten percent, but we don't wanna pop the lower, I know that sounds, but is that, is that discriminatory? I mean, is that allowed to say, somebody, just because you make a higher salary, you're gonna pay a higher percentage? Is that what, because I think that's what you just said.
So, so yes, and the proposals that are presented to you, the seven and a half percent was a modest number, we could make that number higher, or lower, if you decide to do so.
Can you make it different for different levels of people that was different salaries? Because ten percent's gonna hit someone making thirty harder than it is making sixty, right? But is that even legal to do? I've never heard of that.
Well, less than fifty, it's zero percent.
Many different employers, and including, uh, government entities, and John and Alicia, could you speak more to the legality of that?
You can classify premiums by salary ban, it's done all the time.
Okay. So the proposal that I presented to the court was for those making less than fifty to either have a zero percent increase, or a modest increase of, of five percent, and then those making more would absorb more of the cost. And even still, with those recommendations, it's still a modest increase. We could either do flat across the board, we could do salary ban, or we could do nothing.
Salary ban makes it more palatable, I mean, because it, I mean, I hate to do it to anybody, but it, I don't know what to do, I don't know how we're gonna pay for it either.
And given that at least seventy percent of our employees make less than fifty thousand a year, that is why the salary banded contributions was presented to the court as an option.
Sure, put a big old pop on those ones who don't, who make over fifty.
Correct.
If seventy percent of our salaries are under fifty.
Yes, it does require more contributions indeed. And so one of the packets that I have before you shows that number, uh, if you do, uh, buy.
Where are you at?
On this packet here.
What page is that?
Should we go out of workshop, Judge, should we start making motions?
Are y'all ready to come out of workshop?
We're still in workshop, so we can, we ain't kidding.
Yeah, we can't make motions yet.
I'm not making a motion, you said what page?
No, no, I, I was just saying that we're ready to do that.
It's on the screen, Commissioner, it's.
Oh, okay, thanks.
Um, our.
You know, the, the way it looks here, if we, anything under, you say anything under fifty, or fifty under, not gonna, no increase.
No, he's saying modest.
Modest, or modest increase. I don't know what modest is, man, increase is increase. But, but anything above, so anybody making above that, it's gonna pay maybe twice as more?
Yeah, to get to the average. Yeah, to get to the average.
If I can just point out that what's on the screen is more than one scenarios, this is just one option. It, that covers two pages, under fifty K, so, under fifty K, to.
Zero.
Zero, then you have fifty to seventy-five. The next, uh, page, seventy-five to a hundred, over a hundred. The second scenario, if you scroll down some more, Connie. It's fifty K, under fifty K. You keep going, there's, there's three, there's three scenarios here.
You say a hundred is a hundred pay period, a hundred, one time.
This is annual salary, annual salary.
A hundred, annual salary. So, and Plan Three, is that what this is?
Um, what, I'm sorry, I've been using, uh, the page numbers to help me keep track, yeah.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
One and two is, is one scenario, then three and four, and then you have five and six.
Scenario three, I like two.
Or, there's probably more scenarios there, I don't know, this, it's a, it's a.
Can you go back and show two again?
Scenario two or?
Scenario two.
Yeah, the medium is scenario two. The medium increase would be, in the middle, would be scenario two.
With a four and a half percent increase for the under fifty K, not the seven and a half, only doing the four and a half, ten percent for the fifty K to seventy-five, and
four and a half.
Fifteen to the seventy-five, people making seventy-five thousand to a hundred, fifteen percent, and a hun, over a hundred at twenty percent.
And that's the, that gets you an average of seven and a half percent? Is that what that, these all scenarios consider an average of seven and a half percent?
Get you to that seven and a half percent without putting the burden on the lower paying, lower paid employees.
No matter what we do, it's not gonna be enough, so y'all decide, and I'll go along, because I, I mean, no matter what we do, it's not gonna work.
Exactly. It's still not, it's not enough to cover us, so we'll, yeah.
We're screwed, no matter how we do this, so it's just a matter of how you wanna unscrew it, I don't know how to do it.
It's not, it's not a pretty scenario at all.
Bad mamajamma.
So, are we ready to come out of the workshop then and, um.
Yes, ma'am.
Deal with them, so it is eleven-seventeen, and we are coming out of the workshop and going to the regular agenda, human resources, discussing, consider authorizing, approving, noise county employees self-funded group health programs and ancillary services renewals for the plan twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five. I will, uh, accept any more discussion or a motion, if we're ready for a motion after all the discussion, that being, um, anyone, I, I.
What do you wanna do, Judge?
Accept a motion if someone has one, the only addition I want, we're at, in the regular agenda, we can do a motion now, oh, sorry.
Uh, just a suggestion, uh, there, I think there's about three parts to this, and the first one should probably be approving the renewals.
Yes. The renewal rates just for the employees, we're not gonna.
No, no, not the, not that part, the renewals of the actual health plans, first.
Oh, okay, this, so we're gonna need three different votes for all of these on the bottom, not one vote for it, okay, perfect.
Then y'all can get to the employee contribution.
So, um.
Could that motion include direction to go out for an RFP, because the only reason I'm, only reason I wanna even continue doing it this was, cause you said we're going out for RFP, and we're gonna look at everything.
That's for next year, yes.
I'd like direction to have that, so that you can start working on that with direction from us too. Yeah, I'd like to.
Yes.
Get that.
Good idea, start early.
So.
Start early, start now.
Do I have a motion on the benefits renewal rates?
No, not on the rates, just on the renewal of the plan, right, Michael?
Yes.
Not the rates.
Yeah, oh, it says rates on here, sorry, yeah, plan, yes, very good, thank you for pointing that out.
Okay, so the motion would be to re, to renew the plan, but to direct the purchasing agent to immediately go out for RFP to look at a complete overhaul of this current plan for the next year, that'd be my motion.
With other agents, I mean, outside the county, right, I mean.
Well, I'm gonna, I got another motion for.
Well, that's direction, but he'll have to bring that back to another board.
But, well, hold on, but that's true, because.
So, uh, what I'm gonna take from this is y'all are giving me directions to start working on the RFP.
Yes.
Uh, as soon as I get some definitive items for you to consider as to which specific direction we'll take, I will definitely bring that back to the court before we get too far downstream.
Well, then let's add to that motion, in that RFP, that don't, that, that don't include the outside non-county employees.
Okay.
That, right.
Well, my motion is gonna be to add them with the contract stating that they pay all of the risk, oh, that's a different one, okay.
Well, that's another motion, but, this is for, this is for next year's plan, like the RFP for next year's plan.
But this is just renewing the plan for next year.
Yeah, it, it might be simpler, I know y'all wanting to get me going on it, I'm not gonna get it.
But that doesn't have anything to do with today's.
I'm not gonna get super far in the next five days, but, uh, I'll have court, y'all have court next week, I can have a real clean agenda item for that specific request.
That specific thing.
Or what specific thing?
The RFP, and the direction you want me to take, uh, with the RFP.
Cause that will be for the next year, it won't affect this year's plan, we're renewing the plan for one year, cause there isn't time to get it done.
It'd just be more, it'd just be more proper if I could just write a regular agenda item for that one.
It's all germane, we can do whatever we want, but.
We're directing him, but we need to renew the plan right now that we have, yes.
Okay.
So he has a motion for that, um, I will, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed, same sign, the motion passes. Then the, um, the next motion we need is on the third-party administration.
On the third-party administration.
That's what's on my list here, what is the other motion we need, Michael?
No, no, that was, that one y'all just made is for all the plan renewals.
Oh, that was for everything renewal, so we don't need that, then the other motion that I would like to make is on our, um, outside entities that are on our plan to renew the agreements with them.
For this year.
For this year, moving forward if they want to continue this year, that they, um, not only pay the employer, um, portion, even included the employer portion of the stop loss, but they pay up to when the stop loss kicks in for their individual risk, whether it be their employee or their employees', um, beneficiaries, or whoever they are, their family members that are listed on their plan.
All claims up to the stop loss.
All claims up to, thank you.
Second, I, yeah, so basically, your motion to notify all the, the non-county employees and their entities, that they have to pay not only
Outside entities, yes.
the premiums are only pay, they're already paying, but their portion of the stop loss premiums, as well as anything that.
The risk, yeah, up to the stop loss kicks in, yes.
Up to the stop loss.
And that number is four-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand.
Four-hundred-and-seventy-five.
But let's don't give a specific number, because you're saying that could change very soon, so whatever the number is, it is.
That has to renew as well.
Like, I don't wanna put just a cap on it, cause then if it goes up, or something happens with the next presentation we're having, so I would, second that as.
Without numbers.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion, and did you get that order down correctly, since we all reworded it and wordsmithed it? Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
So, so this is going to note, put them on notice, and that they have to be, they're in or they're out?
Put them on notice. Yes, they have a choice, but it's their risk, not the county's risk, yeah.
I mean, if this passes, this is gonna initiate a flurry of meetings for our partners that some, if not, if, probably most, other than the hospital district, will have no idea that this is coming, I, I, I don't think this is good policy at all, I mean, I understand the point, and I agree with it, and it's just the circumstance of the timing, but I just, you know, a month or two ago, this would've been much
I agree.
easier for me to accept, but this is, this is quite a, a quick turnaround for groups that have to have their budgets in all by September thirtieth approved and everything, so.
I agree with that, also though.
But this always comes at the end, you know, what, I don't know why we wait so long for all, every time we do, it comes at the end, you know, we know about the laws, we know about shortages.
Light of the information we were just given about the county's budget, I don't think we have any choice, the county cannot afford to pick up the tab for any other entities. And that's the only, and I do agree, they should have more notice, but.
I mean, this is as early as we've ever done it, that, this gives them plenty of notice to go back and see if they can do this or not. I mean, I'd rather, I'd rather cut them off, I mean, I'm just doing this to, this buys them a year, I mean, I, I think we oughta cut them off, I think it's completely bad policy, what we've been doing for twenty-five years, and I take responsibility for it, cause I've been a part of it. So, I mean, I, I'm only doing this as a compromise, cause I, I, I still think this is bad, I, I don't, because I don't think some of them, even if they say they're in, will be able to afford it if it happens to them.
So you think this is a good compromise then?
I think it's.
You think it's a compromise?
It's a compromise, it's all, it's a, it may not be good, it's not good for any of us, the county or them either.
Okay, you mean, good or bad, whatever, it's a compromise. If you feel it's a compromise, then I feel it's a compromise, and I'm more inclined to support that, so.
Well, we have a motion and a second, then, if there is no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, the same sign, the motion passes, and then there was a third motion that we were expecting, I'm sorry, I'm a little.
The rates.
Oh, for the employer portion of the rates. Employee and employer.
I think we're gonna ho, hold on how, we're gonna talk about what we're gonna do, like, cause there's still, but.
Well, just the employee rates we have to do, and I am inclined to go with option number two, that puts the lesser burden on the lower paid employees.
Um, can, can somebody pull up?
Bring up option number two, so we have that, that, it spreads it around, but it puts a lower, it's, I think it was four and a half percent on those making under fifty thousand instead of the original and.
Um, Judge, if I can just clarify, we're changing from a, just to clarify, you're suggesting changing from a flat rate
Yeah, go ahead.
to a salary banned structure for the rates.
So, that was the options we had in front of us, is there something else that I'm?
Oh, that's, she's saying that's a difference than what we've ever done.
It's completely different from anything that we've done historically, we've never done a ban before.
Oh, okay.
What do most counties do?
Yeah.
I mean, where's, where's?
John, can you speak to that?
Commissioner, it's gonna, it's gonna vary, um, you know, based on counties, I, I don't have any specific information to provide you, but, uh, in general, uh, contributions by salary ban is not uncommon, uh, i- in general. Uh, I think it makes possibly sense for the county, since you have such a, uh, wide diverse population, especially those that are earning less than fifty thousand dollars that, um, equate to a little over seventy percent of your workforce, it may make some sense to go to a salary ban based on that. But again, it's, it's really part of the, the culture, uh, of the county, if you want to begin to stratify contributions based on, on a total compensation.
Oh, I hate this.
Also, keep in mind that if we vote on salary-banded, uh, contributions this year, and we decide next year to undo it, we would have to do just that, we'd have to undo everything we did today.
But it can be done.
I'm gonna echo Tim's point, I would
That's a mess.
really think the county needs to make sure that this is the approach that they wanna take moving forward. That it, it is, uh, it is part of the culture that the county is devising, in which higher, uh, higher compensated employees will pay more toward the cost of their program. Uh, it, it, it may be challenging to undo it, uh, at some point in time, so I would just say, uh, while it's a, it's a option worth considering, it, it is something that the county should enter into, um, eyes wide open.
But then we, you're saying we basically don't have an option, we need to do the seven and a half percent across the board, especially for this one year, in light of not enough information in front of us, and what it's going to do to us in the future. We really have one option.
Or zero percent, or the county, right.
Or zero, and the county pick up a hundred percent, yeah.
Well, we certainly can, we certainly can do more than seven and a half percent, but that was the recommendation.
It's only gonna give us two-hundred thousand, I mean, we might as well pick up the whole, I mean, it's not going to create anything.
But then you're gonna have a, if you try to increase future rates to the employees, you're, you're, you'll never be able, you'll never be able to get anywhere. If you don't start giving at least some share, even if it's a small share, yes, then, then you're hitting, then you're gonna hit them with a huge increase. And then you'll have that fallout.
Well, do I have a motion then?
For which one?
I would make the motion, just do the seven and a half percent then.
Seven and a half to the employees, and it's a flat, not banded?
It's a flat, not a banded, just, everybody gets seven and a half percent for this year, in light of the budget we're looking at, I don't think we can not do anything. But, that's my motion, I don't know if anybody else agrees with it, or what.
I think it should be more, but then again, in the spirit of compromise, I'll second your motion for discussion.
I think it should be less.
Right, that's, I get it, that's the problem we have, is how do we pay for it though, I mean, I don't, Commissioner, I, nobody wants to do it, but how are we gonna come up with any money? We, we're gonna have to come up with three and a half.
Basically, what Tim said, those underneath, it's like a three-dollar increase on their premium.
I'd rather give raises, because they want raises, they don't, I mean.
Me too, but this is.
So, if you, there's another screen that has, what the.
You're basically taking it away.
I'm.
Well, but, what do we do? I mean, do we keep funding it, three million a year, we have no reserves, and you, and y'all can raise, you can raise taxes, no, I mean, that's the, that's the alternative. Is this budget comes, that's the hard part about this, we're in a budget cycle, so if you knew you were gonna raise taxes to offset this, then it'd be a lot easier. If, if there's gonna be a, a significant tax increase, then this, this all, you know, that's a, but we don't know what that's gonna do either, so I.
Okay, so if you do seven and a half percent per, and I believe that this is per month to the employee, it's a, it's a, if they're employee only, it's two dollars and ninety-three cents increase, if it's employee plus children, it's twenty-two sixty-nine. Yes, it's that column right there, that's for the EPO, the Christus Bond Network, and if you look right below that, if they're on the Aetna network, those are the rates, so the employee would be able to look at this and see which coverage they have, whether it's the EPO, Christus Network Plan, or the Aetna Plan, and then you can look over here, and that's your monthly increase, correct?
Well, and, and again, let's remember, no matter what we do, we're gonna have to pay eighty to ninety-three percent of this.
And that's right next to it, so again, depending upon which coverage is selected, it shows you how much the county would be picking up.
The increase that we will have, yeah.
Yes.
Well, unless there's another motion, I have a motion on the floor for the seven and a half percent.
And excuse me, Judge, that's just one, just the, this year, not annually.
Of everybody, this year, just this year, oh, no, 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 this is only, we're hoping we do something totally different.
The, the rates, yes, the rates.
Otherwise, if I don't have a second, I will.
My motion would be to have.
You seconded that one already, I'm second.
Yeah, I, I think it's not, not high enough, but I seconded it just for discussion and.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't realize you had seconded.
As a compromise.
And, and I agree, kind of what, with what Commissioner Gonzalez mentioned, maybe the microphone didn't pick it up, but it, that's the constant battle that you hear, it's like, well, I got a raise, but
I know.
I'm having to pay the difference on the healthcare, I mean, I guess if you can try to even it all out, it's, it's easier to accept than you're not getting paid any increase, and then still having to make the difference, but this is.
Well, but, but, okay, let's do the math there, right?
Or you pay more, if you pay more for insurance, then you're not getting it.
Well, but hold on, we, we set aside, the social, let's, let's talk about that, we set aside, if we stick with what we did by eliminating the social services budget, which I believe is in the one-point-eight million dollar range, if I'm not mistaken, for the department?
It was the, uh, ooh, I have my budget, um, it was the administrative, if I remember correctly, and again, I'm going based on memory, I'm not looking at minutes.
We eliminated the entire social services department, and said, as a part of that motion, that all that money would go towards employee raises, that's in the vein of a million eight, and we're, and we're asking for a two-hundred-thousand-dollar increase, so they are, they are not getting all their, it's two dollars a month in some cases, and the raise is gonna be more than that, if it, if we don't change that.
Social services budget for the administration, that's the overhead, was the one-point-one-five-two million?
Plus.
And then you have the direct benefits that we give directly to the public?
Which was eliminated, right?
What?
We eliminated the entire social services.
Well, it's four-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand, but y'all had said something about maybe potentially giving some of those funds to another agency.
But that wasn't the motion we made, what the motion we made was to eliminate, so I'm saying, if we stick.
And, but we do have to keep some of the budget for the pauper burial.
Well, I'm saying, if we stick to what we did, what we do later is, is, is speculation, what we did was. What we do later is, is, is speculation, what we did was, we eliminated that, which is, I, I stand corrected, that's one point five million dollars.
That's correct.
If we stick with that, the increase that we're proposing at seven and a half percent is two hundred thousand dollars to employees across the board, so one point five million minus two hundred thousand means that's still an up of one point three million dollars to the employees on this deal.
Or even if you say one point one, it's still nine hundred thousand, it's still like a break even amount.
Yes, even, even, yeah, even if you say, even if you use the one point one, it.
But, but we passed was one point five.
Yes, correct.
I don't know what's gonna, I don't know what y'all are gonna change, but what we passed was one point five comes back as raises to our employees. If that changes, then it changes, but if it doesn't, as we sit today, it's one point five million dollars minus two hundred thousand, that's a net gain to the employees overall of one point three million dollars.
That's correct.
So we're not eating up there in any way, shape or form.
That's correct.
So.
I agree, I agree with that, but, but it's gone back up again for discussion though.
Say that again?
I mean, it's gone back up again for discussion.
Right, I mean, if y'all change it, you can change it.
So.
Cause I tabled it for the next meeting.
As we sit today.
I know.
That item did come at, and I thought there was a vote to retain two of those.
No, we didn't vote.
No, you didn't vote.
We didn't, we, we, we talked about it, but we didn't vote on it.
You kept two positions, you moved them over to veterans.
Two to veteran services, veterans.
Right, but I thought that came out of that one point, that's already been committed, okay, so the two, so, okay, one point four.
Yeah.
But, but, but two people aren't, it shouldn't be less than a hundred thousand, so one point four.
Even if you keep three people, it's going, three more people, it's still gonna be one point one, so.
No matter what, there's still significant money and therefore the two hundred thousand that you're passing on to be a zero cost interest, a zero base
Exactly.
So it'd be totally.
increase for the employees when you do it that way.
That is correct.
Yes, okay, so that will all come up in budget, but for all of our employees that are listening, that it will by the time we get through with that, and we did promise that as an increase to all our employees, so it will be a zero cost to our employees, even adding this as seven point five, and really, we could vote today to do zero next year and us transfer it all since it's going to be that way, it doesn't really matter which way you cut the piece of pie, if you want to say zero or you want to say seven, we're gonna give them an increase, but since we promised that in the budget, I think we have to do it this way, because then we will in turn give it to them.
What do you mean, promise of what?
Promise the money that we cut in the social services to go to employee raises, that's a budget item, we need to do it this way, and then in turn, they will get it covered in the budget meeting when we do it again.
Right.
Yes.
Correct.
But we didn't set the amount, I mean.
No, we just said we were gonna use it, but there's significant amount to cover the seven and a half percent.
The amount.
Right. Okay. If you think, if you do keep three positions and we still can do it.
Yes.
But please keep in mind that these rates would be effective October first.
Yes, and that's what, my budget and all of that is gonna be October first.
That's correct.
So is social, yeah, so is that what, right.
So we have a motion and a second to go with the seven and a half percent across the board to, for all employees.
And the employer rates too, that were just on the screen.
And the employer rates that will, yes. Is there any other discussion? And then I would ask for a motion, all those in favor, sorry, aye.
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 Any opposed?
Is it for seven or six?
The seven and a half, but it will wind up being a zero because in the budget, we're gonna give them, the employers that money back.
Take too much away.
Can you put, can you put that in writing?
We already voted on the other, it was, it was motion, yes, so.
What, I thought it was seven, we now we're seven and a half now?
It was always seven and a half, is what was your, that's what's in the packet, seven and a half.
That's what's in the packet. That's the two hundred thousand.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, two hundred total is what's gonna come from the employees, and we have the money set aside in the budget to give to the employees for that.
That was approved five oh, okay.
I assume.
But, yeah.
Yeah, we were waiting on Commissioner Gonzalez, yes, okay. Are there any other decisions that we need to make today with our, any other votes that are we required to take today, I believe that is it, we are not gonna work on the other. Our portion of that will come up in the budget meetings, I assume.
That's correct.
Yes, when we deal with the employees, yes, whether we want to do that staggered or how much we're gonna transfer and fund our healthcare.
Uh, you, you set the employer portion?
Yes, yes.
Employer portion will be the twenty-seven point eighty percent?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, um, if there, we do have nothing to go into executive over?
Wait, did we vote on the?
I think when you voted on.
Right, nevermind, nevermind.
Yes, then, yes, okay.
I'm sorry, RFPs later, you're gonna do that later, okay.
Yes. So, uh, that will come back to next court. If there is no further business, it is eleven forty, is, are there any adjournments in memory for anyone here?
Can I just ask real quick, how we are, how is this going to be, um, relayed, we sometimes do this and then we've, how are we gonna relay this to everybody that's?
We need to get the agreement for all our outside entities quickly and sent to them.
Well, no, we need to give them notice, like, cause I don't wanna, right, we need to send them notice that, just a letter, Jenny, maybe, from you or the judge, like, today that says, here's what the motion was, we'll get you the agreements later, so that we could put them on notice, so that they have time.
We can work with you to get the wording, but I don't, it, I mean, it's, it's the court's action, yeah.
You paint in my office, we'll do it, we'll do it in my office, yes.
Here's what the motion was that was passed in court, we're giving you that, we're giving you notice, you know, and we'll get you the documents that go along with this later, but I want to get a notice, like John said, we want to get it to them quick.
If you choose to be a part of this, yes.
But can we, it, it can be an email to them, but just something that, we know that's going to the right person, that says this is what the court passed today, effective, like, next, like, yeah, October one.
October one. And these agreements have to be signed if you wish to continue with your employees.
We'll work with both the court and with HR as necessary to get that out today.
Those need to be signed quickly because. Yeah, cause the employer, um, they have to do the open enrollment for their employees as well, so it needs to be ASAP, yeah.
Right.
Um.
So we would have to probably delay the open enrollment for those people until we're back as to whether or not they're going to participate.
Extend. Whether their entities are going to allow them to participate, so we may have to do.
Or give them a little more time to enroll, or something.
Extension for their open enrollment, if their employees have not signed these agreements that allow them to continue.
So you're saying delay just for the external agencies?
Yes, yes.
Cause if they opt out, then they don't need to go through open enrollment, if, if they need a little time to decide, we don't want to not let them have open enrollment if they choose to stay under these new conditions.
Well, you can, and they can, if they don't agree, then their signing up doesn't hurt us if they.
The employees could always select what they would, assuming that their entity is still gonna participate in our insurance, and then if they, the entity chooses to not participate in our health insurance, then they would
Automatically be, yes.
Yes, they've received different information from their employer at that time.
I don't know what the logistics are, I just want to make sure that you take that into consideration.
I would recommend what Lisa's approach, that way.
Yeah, I'm gonna let y'all do that, but then, is it, is it appropriate?
But notification quickly today, with my office as well, yeah.
Yes.
Is it appropriate at this point too, to, to, to make a, another, you know, a motion that says that, that we as a court are putting a moratorium on anybody else getting in? I mean, because I don't, we.
Well, we're not taking these people in, we're not taking nobody else in.
Well, but these people are giving, no, but these people.
But do we vote to do that about not taking, I mean?
Well, these people are getting the opportunity to stay in, so now are we gonna get calls from other people that says, now, we, now granted, it should be only for a year if we stay on course, but what if other entities call and say, hey, we want that deal, what do we do then?
With the cost, with them covering all the risk and the responsibility on, I don't think you're gonna have a whole lot of people jumping in with small entities that want to join.
And you gotta make sure we say it's for a year only, Jenny, I guess.
One year only.
One year only.
Yeah, that was part of that motion.
Which part is for one year only?
For the agencies to, to join.
In other words, this deal was a stopgap compromise to let them stay in for a year, and I want to make sure, yeah, it's a good point, Commissioner, that that motion clearly articulated that this is only for a year and then.
With the outside entities.
And then they have to go on their own way, right, I mean, that was the intent of everybody, right, so.
And that's for the HD also?
What?
Is that for health, uh, hospital district also?
For everybody.
I don't know, hospital district is part of us though, ain't it?
Well, I mean, it's part of everybody for now, if we want to change it, that was the general motion.
I think their MOUs would have to be renewed annually if we choose to move forward, but let's do these MOUs or agreements, whatever you want to call them, that list this, and I don't think many people are going to do that, given that they are going to be incurring all the risk and the cost of their employees and their employees' dependents.
I think the hospital district is part of our family already, I mean.
And then that opportunity is going to be extended to not the credit union is?
The credit union, um, she is saying we by, she said earlier, we by law cannot open it up to people like that.
Right, so if the motion was to do this for a year
To allow them to do something else.
And then everybody's out, if someone wants to come back and petition us for something differently, then they have the right to do that, so what, can we just leave it?
Leave it at this year, this is for one year, and then we can address the others afterwards, yeah.
Because I'm telling.
Okay, but as to the credit union now?
Are we gonna allow the credit union to stay on, because by law, we were never legally allowed to have them on to begin with.
That's a great question, and I don't think we can if we're, if we're not legally allowed.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, I don't know how, I didn't, I don't remember that advisory, I would, so, I mean, I, I would.
So we need to send them the legal opinion that says we can't, we don't need a motion to say we're excluding them if we're saying we cannot legally allow them to stay in.
It was in ten. There was advisory two thousand and ten.
We're gonna, we'll send them communication, but we're not gonna share attorney-client communication with them as they're an outside entity, but we'll put them on notice.
Okay. There's no motion necessary for that one, since we are now finding out that it's against the law for us to do that, so we definitely want to do what we're supposed to do. Okay, anything else? It is eleven, there was no adjournments in memory or anything, it is eleven forty-six, this meeting is adjourned.